And I just want to acknowledge that we do have extra guests with us. We have some of our local elected dignitaries with us. So we just wanted to acknowledge Mayor Schaaf, thank you for being here with us. We also have someone, you're gonna have to help me out with our names here. Who else do we have in the?
The Mayor of Berkeley, Jesse Aragon.
Thank you for that. Hello, Mayor Aragon, welcome. And I thought I seen someone from our.
Alameda?
From Alameda.
Is Mayor Valameda on?
Mayor Ashcroft.
Mayor Ashcroft. Welcome, Mayor Ashcroft. And I also want to welcome, I believe.
Mary Nicely.
Mary Nicely from Secretary of Education, Tony Thurman's office. And who else? I'd wanna make sure that we're acknowledging all of our dignitaries.
Okay, we're good.
Fantastic. Again, calling the meeting to order. We'll start off with our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I'll go ahead and lead us. Everyone, please stand if you are able to. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated.
Liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And we're just gonna get to business. We're going straight to our awards. And with that, we have, I'm just gonna take a few seconds because I'm gonna actually turn this portion over to some of my colleagues. But as, as your board president, I want to personally thank trustee Meredith Brown. Has she come on yet? Where is she? You can't start this without her.
He is here.
And President May interrupt for a second. We also forgot to.
She says she's here.
Okay, fantastic. And did I hear VP Reese? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if you can hear me very well, but we also have David Silver from Mayor Schaaf's office too as well that we did not call out.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, Meredith is gonna log out and log back in.
Okay, let's, let's let her do that. Technology.
So we can start with Karen, right?
We can, but I don't want, so, so we can go ahead and start with Karen. So I'm gonna turn. I'm gonna turn this portion over to trustee Gonzalez, Ewan. But, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to first say just a few words to Karen Weinstein, trustee Weinstein. It's been an amazing journey working with you. You came on full force, ready to serve as a trustee for the Peralta Community College District. It was amazing. By your second year, you came in and stepped up to serve as a, as my, as a vice president. I had an amazing time doing that job with you, in partnership with you. And always, always a challenge, but the challenge was good. I think I learned a lot. Not just about you, trustee Weinstein, but also a lot about myself during that time. And so I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service and wish you the best as you transition forward.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to trustee Gonzalez, Ewan.
Thank you so much. Just so people know why President Beni isn't doing this part. She said, well, Nikki, you Berkeley people, you always kinda hang together. I think you better lead this one. And, well, it's kinda true. There's a long tradition of Berkeley playing a really important and special role within the Peralta Colleges. And, and Karen has really just so filled that role in such an extraordinary way. And I'm gonna say a few words later about this, but I wanna start with just noting that we have a few people, we're gonna say some words about Karen, words of honor. We've got various proclamations. And why don't, why don't we start with Mayor Schaaf? I think you came, you're longstanding friend and ally in this progressive movement that, that we're all part of here, that Karen has really been an extraordinary leader in. And, and so Mayor Schaaf, if you would, why don't you, why don't you lead the way here, if you would, please?
Thank you so much, trustee Gonzalez, Ewan. And if I slip and call any of you by your first name, you'll have to forgive me. But you are all dear friends to me, not just allies and warriors in our united fight for educational equity, but really some of the most outstanding human beings and, you know, fellow residents of this great East Bay that I have ever had the honor and privilege of working with. And Karen, you know how much I absolutely love you. Karen Weinstein is someone who brings people together. She was doing that long before she ran for Peralta or, and became an elected official herself. And I have no doubt she will be doing that long after. Your commitment to justice, to fairness, to governmental excellence, and, and always putting people first. Your dedication to the students. I will never forget the event at your homes, Karen, where you were raising funds to create a resource center for the undocumented students at Peralta. It's amazing. That's just who you are. It has just been the personal pleasure of my life to be in the glow of your warm heart. My, the Director of Education to the Mayor, David Silver, wants to actually read to you the formal mayoral proclamation that we have prepared for you. We will frame it, we will disinfect it, and mail it to you. But it is an official proclamation to, to just do a tiny bit of justice to your incredible legacy, a huge legacy in a very short time on this board. So David, we arm wrestled and he really wanted the privilege of reading this for you and to you. So if I can pass it over to the Director of Education, to the Mayor, David Silver.
Thank you.
Great. Well, Karen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this to you, but I also wanted to say just a quick word as well, saying, as the mayor shared, you are, you are a unifier. And we've had a lot of different transitions in Oakland since the mayor has come on board. And you've always been someone that has helped us to, to make sure that we can keep the eyes on the students, the eyes on equity, and ensure that our students who, who need it the most and who are first generation are the ones that are focused on. And whether it's the partnership with the Oakland Promise, whether it's the partnership of ensuring that they're at the center, you have always been such a trusted ally. And as the mayor stated, more importantly, just an advocate for students and bringing people together. So I'm gonna take a crack at this here. In recognition of Karen Weinstein, whereas Karen Weinstein has served as a trustee of Peralta for Area Six and will complete her term sadly in November 2020. Whereas Karen has worked diligently to transform the lives of Peralta Community College students, faculty and staff. And whereas Karen Weinstein has served as a community liaison for the Dreamers and Undocumented Student Task Force. She supported undocumented students at, and the Community Resource Center through fundraising, supporting the involvement with elected officials, and helping with educational events and state resolutions. And whereas Karen served as Chair of the Peralta Community College Emergency Subcommittee, where she, in, where she did incredible work with policies and student safety. Whereas she was the liaison with the Oakland Promise and helped to ensure availability and increase retention across Peralta and Oakland. And we could go on and on with all these wherethes, but we're gonna say, therefore, it is proclaimed that I, standing here on behalf, behalf of Libby Schaaf, the Mayor of the City of Oakland, California, hereby commend Karen Weinstein for her outstanding career and for her commitment to student success, equity, and access, and excellence in education. In witness thereof, I have hereby proclaimed that seal of the city of Oakland to afford to Karen Weinstein. Let's give it up for Karen Weinstein. I'll pass it back to our mayor. Go ahead, Karen.
No, I, I just wanna say thank you to Libby, and I hope it's okay to call you Libby. And Dave, you two have just been tremendous in my life. You've been a constant. And you've really been supportive at every turn. And I love getting phone calls and calling back right away so we get things done. And Libby, you've just been extraordinary in terms of helping the city of Oakland and helping Peralta. And so I just wanna thank you so much. What you had to say meant a lot to me. And, and I hope we stay close as time goes on. Thank you.
Good. Okay, now Karen, I'm gonna tell you, you're not gonna be able to say thank you to every single person who will be here like a long time.
Okay.
If there are a lot of people here. Jesse is gonna, Jesse Aragon, the Mayor of Berkeley. God, we all really are all on first name basis here, but I'll try to keep the formalities. Mayor Aragon is gonna say a few words. Please, Jesse.
I second everything that Mayor Schaaf had said. You know, I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with Karen for many years. Karen is a Berkeley resident. And I was an enthusiastic supporter when she ran for the Peralta Board of Trustees in 2016. And she's just provided tremendous leadership, not only to the Board of Trustees and to the organization, really helping this organization get through some very challenging times and to improve its financial sustainability and its support for students, but particularly the work she has done to support undocumented students. And we worked very closely together to support the Undocumented Community Resource Center at Berkeley High School. You are very actively involved in the Berkeley Promise Program as well. And the support you provided for Berkeley City College, I just really want to acknowledge, not just the expansion of Berkeley City College, which is supported by the recent bond, but the support that you provided to the students at Berkeley City College. I know it's deeply appreciated by the students, by the faculty, and by all the families who, who have students at Berkeley City College. So you really have brought many parts of our community together, the city, the business community, our students. And you'll be deeply missed in this position. And just on behalf of the city of Berkeley, we wanna thank you so very much for your incredible service. And I know that you're not done, that you're still gonna be active in so many different ways. But, but thank you, Karen, from the bottom of my heart.
Oh, thank you. And I just will say something to Mayor Aragon, Jesse. I just wanna say that Jesse is always available when I call him and say, can you please run over to Berkeley City College and please speak to our undocumented students, or please speak to another group of students? And, you know, that really means a lot, and I appreciate that. And thank you so much for the work that you've done for Berkeley City College. Really appreciate it. And the Sanctuary City Committee and everything else that you've done to help us. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. The extraordinary thing about Karen is this combination of the ability to do long distance running and sprinting. Because the long distance running is really clear in, in, in your, her career. But the sprinting is, you can't be at Peralta without knowing how to run fast to get stuff done. And one of the areas where you've really excelled in that is with supportive undocumented students. From Berkeley City College, they were kind enough to come over tonight. We have Catalina Martinez and Kayana Harris and Gabrielle Martinez from the Undocumented Community Resource Center. And I think they wanna say a few words. I saw him here.
They need to be unmuted.
Hannah, do you wanna speak first?
I'll go first. Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Kenna Harris. I'm a chemical engineer major at Berkeley City College. I am here on behalf of the Berkeley City College and the Undocumented Community Resource Center. I, as a two-time recipient of the Dreamers Scholarship from Berkeley City College, can speak tremendously on the work of Karen Weinstein. I appreciate you. We thank you. Trustee Weinstein, your continued work and support for providing equality and the access of education has been tremendous. And we recognize this with you. And you have not just opened your home to us once, but you have always opened your heart to us this whole time. And you're always there. Your leadership and support has always been pearl. It's non-existent comparison to anyone else. Like, it was there all the time. We'd call on you and you were there. And for the three years of me being a volunteer, you've been a great ally, a support. And we love and we'll miss you. But, you know, we know you're still gonna be there, so we look forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Carolina Martinez, and I'm here to thank you, Karen Weinstein, because for everything that you've done for the Undocumented Community Resource Center. And I, I just wanna share a little bit of a recognition for Karen because we've been working with her since 2015, and she's been a great ally. She opened, like Kayana said, she opened her heart and her, and her home as well. And we have so many memories with her. And you, we know we, you're always gonna be there for us and give us the support that you always give us, but we wanna thank you. And I just wanna say that we have a recognition from the Undocumented Community Resource Center and Berkeley City College for your, your timeless effort since 2015 in supporting the funding and continued growth of the Undocumented Community Resource Center through the fundraising, influence, building alliances with local elected officials, advocating for policy change at campus and district levels, and serving as an advisor and mentor to numerous students, staff, faculty, and compromise. This true grassroots effort. Thank you, Karen, so much for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you so much.
And Gabrielle, you're gonna close this out?
Sure. Just wanna quickly, we, we met Karen because a former president of our campus, Karen was on her advisory council. And Karen, I think, already had us on her radar, but, you know, waited patiently to formally, you know, connect with the, the players at our campus. And then we were introduced. And it's been an inseparable bond that we've had since then. I really love some of the language in the award, Catalina, because you truly have mentored so many of us as professionals, as students, and as people, more than anything. You've led by example. You've, you have this really amazing ability to anticipate the next step, whether it's something that a person needs, or a political process, or a policy we're trying to advance. Like, you always see two steps ahead. And, you know, we, we see the gears turning constantly, and we soak that up. You know, we soak that up being around you. So we appreciate the mentoring. You're, you're truly, in many cultures, but from my background in Latin American culture, you know, someone who, depending on the age difference, you would say that you're a tia, even though we're not blood related, you are auntie in that sense. And so you're, you're family to us. You're Auntie Karen, you're Tia Karen, or Tia Karen, I guess we could say. And we, we appreciate you always being available to us. An email, a text, a phone call. You opened your home, as Kayana mentioned, and we'll forever be grateful. And we're, we're not gonna let you go away that easy. We're gonna still be bothering you, I promise.
Thank you so much, Gabrielle and Carolina. And I just wanna say that I, I met the Undocumented Student Committee before I ran for office. And I just fell in love with them. I just fell in love with the students, what they were trying to do. And Gabrielle was terrific. And, you know, it will, that community will always be close to my heart. And when I leave, I expect to come back and work with you all and continue to support you because you're really, really terrific. Thank you so much. It means a lot to me.
Fabulous. So Karen, you know, we have words of greeting and regards from Rowena Tomining, former president of Berkeley City College, who supported, there's a wonderful resolution from Assembly Member Buffy Wicks and the Council for New State Legislature. And Mayesh, I don't know whether you can just put that up for a brief moment. And I wanna give you an opportunity to, to share your thoughts. But before we do that, I wanna just say, I, I won't talk for more than a phone book's worth of time. But really, what I do wanna say is, Karen, it's been really important to me personally that you've been on the board. I, I don't think it's any secret to anybody in this room that we don't always, as a board, get along that well. And that Peralta can be a tough place to be. You know, even when you're trying to be respectful, just the issues are hard. And you've really just been an extraordinary ally to, I think, to students, to faculty, and to me personally in this period where I think we've done some transformative things. And a lot of that, thanks, May, for, for putting that up. If, if we could get back to the group screen, that would be helpful because it's nice to be able to see everybody at once. Thank you. You know, if I can just highlight a couple of things that I think you've done really well in your term of office, it's have high standards and expectations for how this district will serve people, will serve the people. So without attacking and criticizing, you really were able to put out some very basic expectations about how we treat each other, about how women in particular will be treated in this district, about basic issues of community safety and what we as an institution will do to think about and provide for the health and the well-being of every person who works here, and every person who goes to school here, and everybody who visits. Those are, they sound like they should be just normal and easy. But at Peralta, sometimes even those basic things were very hard to keep front and center. And then the other thing, and I'll just say this real briefly, is your insistence that our financial accounting, our financial priorities were transparent, they were accurate, and they reflected the values of our community. Your insistence on that, in some very just basic matter-of-fact, like, of course, we will do this, in that manner, I think, really set a tone, an expectation that led to a transformation of this district and of this board. And you know, I won't get too political here, but we've got a very different board. And your leadership and support in pulling together community allies to really elect trustees to represent our community well has been extraordinary. So I think that's about as controversial as I'll get. I think you are universally loved in this district. And for that, you know, you have no one but yourself to thank because you're an extraordinary person. All you have to do is keep being yourself, which you will be wherever you are. So thank you so much for your years of service for us here at Peralta, but also in the broader community for decades and decades and decades, and hopefully decades moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want to say a word or two, and then we can move on. I think Meredith Brown is waiting for a little love.
Okay, I actually have something a little bit longer to say, so shall I wait until the end?
Yeah, I think we have Mary Nicely, who also wants to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. And I think the superintendent is trying to get over here. Waiting to swear someone in over in a different meeting and is getting like, why are they taking so long? I need to get over to Karen. So he may be popping in any minute now. So just, you know, throw me out when he pops in. But you know, I want to echo what everyone else has said. And I really want to thank the trustees for giving me an opportunity to talk about Karen. And can I just say what a treasure Karen is? How honored I am to have her as a friend and a hero. Back when she first decided to run, there was a couple of options. And when this one came up, it's like, I got excited. And it's like, Erin, do that, do that. The students, you know, the district, everyone. I'm a huge fan of community colleges, and I was just so excited for her. And I know I speak for myself and the state superintendent when I say that we really admire your focus on making sure that everything you do ultimately has our students at the center. I mean, that's what this is all about. But that you also understand completely how important it is for us to have incredible educators. And I know, and I'm so thankful for the support that you give both of them. And for us, you know, it's like, it's just not easy. And no one knows, that's not in public service, how really, really hard this is, and the jabs you take, and the grace that you show through all of it. I just, you know, I just adore you. And I miss you so much. But we all know, you know, education is completely central to the success of this state and for everyone. And as a proud community college graduate, I know firsthand what an important role it's played in my family's life, my parents', immigrants' lives, that they could have gone to community college for free and were successful and able to raise our families. So I'm really just so proud of you. And I'm so very proud that you decided to become a trustee and that, you know, all the accomplishments in this short tenure. Really, I'm sad to see you leave, but I'm also really excited to see what you're going to do with a first lady who is going to give so much attention to community colleges. I'm so excited for that. And I just want to tell you I love you, and I can't wait to be able to give you a real hug. But we're now, it's going to be a giant virtual hug. So thank you, Karen, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Mary. You know, in order to do this kind of work, you have to have people that you can text, that you can call. You could say, help, what's going on here? And Mary has always been there. She is always supportive, and I so appreciate the work that she's doing now for the state, and of course, the work that Tony is doing. But you know, push comes to shove, friendship is really crucial. And I really love you as a friend, and I want to thank you so much for your support. It's been incredible. And I will keep going, and hopefully, we will all keep going. Thank you. And thank you to Tony Thurman, wherever he is.
And so, thank you, everyone. And Mary, just in case superintendent does come on, just let us know. It's okay to interrupt because we don't want to miss, we don't want to miss him. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn this portion over to trustee Handy. Trustee Handy, are you here? You're not on the screen.
No, I am here, and I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the order. So this is a very bittersweet evening. On one hand, we really want to honor the commitment that trustee Brown has brought to Peralta Colleges for the past eight years. At the same time, very sorry to lose her legal expertise, her sense of humor, and her not missing anything. I mean, it was very important. Everyone brings something different to the table, and Meredith brought more than most, and has just been an incredible person. And we will miss her, not only here at Peralta, but Meredith also represented the state of California and doing webinars and things in terms for CCLC. She also represented all of the trustees at the national level at ACCT. So first, in going through this, I would like to acknowledge, we have, of course, we have Mayor Shaft here. And do you have yours? Or is it, Ma, are you going to put that up on the screen?
Proclamation. I have a copy to read if you don't have it to put up on the screen.
I think Maisha, Maisha has it. There we are, thank you. You don't have to read the whole thing, you know, you can do the high points, but of course. Or you could just speak from the heart.
Well, I will try and do a little bit of both, if you don't mind. Boy, I first met Karen Weinstein in 2010, and I had just finished the Emerge program. I've known Meredith probably for, so that's like one decade. I think I've known Meredith for two decades. I first met Meredith as one of the most organized, passionate soccer moms in Oakland. So Meredith has always been a champion for children, a champion for Oakland, one of the smartest, most engaged people I have ever known. Also, we have been on the board together of the Democratic Lawyers Club. And let's just be honest, Meredith like runs the whole thing. She does 110% of the work. And that is how Meredith shows up to everything that she does. And it really is quite a passing of the torch. I'm so excited about the new colleagues that are joining Peralta, but this is some amazing talent and dedication that is moving on tonight. And so I won't read all of the beautiful proclamation, but Meredith brings amazing skills to her service on Peralta, which started in 2012. Again, a huge legacy of work. And obviously, we all know that she is a fierce public sector lawyer. She has brought that knowledge. And her accomplishments, not just to Peralta, but to the Community College League of California, particularly her work on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which get called the DEI initiatives. I mean, she personally helped lead the California College League of Community Colleges to develop a DEI certificate of excellence. So I mean, she is contributing to this work across our entire great state. So she has led this work both here locally and across the country. She was instrumental in getting data just aggregation adopted across Peralta Community College system, something Meredith, we are trying to now do at the state level in light of this pandemic. She is just one of the smartest, like you said, funny, and just completely committed to children, Oaklanders that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And I anticipate, Meredith, you and I will be working on things for the betterment of Oakland and children and public education and the state of California for many, many more years to come. So it is my honor to proclaim that I, Libby Shaft, mayor of the city of Oakland, California, hereby commend Meredith Brown on her outstanding commitment to the Peralta Community College District and for her unyielding dedication to educational equity, access, and excellence. The seal of the city is therefore witnessed and placed upon this official proclamation. Meredith, it is an honor to be giving you this distinction and celebrating you as a friend, a colleague, and an amazing Oaklander. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Shaft. And next, we have Maisha. Actually, we have our mayor of Alameda, Marilyn Isley Ashcroft.
Thank you, good evening, Tracy. Hi, Meredith. And hi, Libby and Jesse. You know, it's lovely to be here and see all of you. And it just makes me realize how much I miss all of you and thinking about how our paths used to cross. And when Libby mentioned, sorry, I'm on first-name basis tonight, but when Libby mentioned the Alameda County Democratic Lawyers Club, I'm part of that. And oh my goodness, those luncheons at Everett and Jones Barbecue, just the best food. And you could stop by and cast your vote too, but the barbecue buffet was just fabulous. But Meredith, I was thinking, I just haven't seen you for the longest time, probably all this year. But I too am sad to know that you are stepping down from the Peralta Community Colleges District, but you have done so much. She must be one of those people who just squeezes more than 24 hours into a day for everything she accomplishes. But we all know that old adage about if you need to get something done, ask a busy woman, right? And there's a lot of busy women on the screen, and men too. We appreciate you, certainly. But anyway, it is just an honor and a privilege to be able to add my appreciation from the city of Alameda to you. By the way, Meredith, when I was mentioning to my husband Howard this morning, he said, you know, Meredith and I used to work together at the same law firm. It is a small world, so he sends his best wishes too. Anyway, on behalf of the city of Alameda, we present this certificate of appreciation to Meredith Brown with sincere appreciation and gratitude for your service as a trustee on the Peralta Community Colleges District Board, which just doesn't begin to say the many, many things that can be said about you. But Meredith, you should feel so proud of the accomplishments on behalf of others and the betterment of others, helping to lift up all of the individuals who have come through this amazing community college system. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all your years of service and good work. And I look forward to seeing you in person for too long.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you to my Alameda colleague, Bill Withrow. I know you had a hand in this. Thank you.
Snack me in.
Thank you so much, Marilyn, for coming. And next, we don't have a speaker, but we, Maisha, if we can have on the screen our certificate of recognition from Assembly Member Buffy Wicks. And here we have a certificate of recognition from Meredith Brown in honor of extraordinary achievement and service. Congratulations on your retirement from the Peralta Community College Board of Trustees. I commend you for your outstanding dedication to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion in education. Thank you for your many contributions and your unwavering commitment to our community. Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, 15th District, and also another fan of yours, Uche, as well.
Thank you, thank you, Buffy.
And then we have another proclamation. But Meredith, I think I will need you to hold that up to the screen from Alameda County Supervisors Nate Miley and Keith Carson. Can you all see that? And again, it's to know Meredith is to know that she is everywhere, doing everything at the same time. I'm a knitter, and there's a term that when you read, if you don't read through the pattern, you're doing something, and at the bottom of it, it says, "at the same time." You need to be doing something else. Well, Meredith is always doing quite a few things at the same time. And so I'm just going to, oh, and one more thing. I think I did say that Congresswoman Barbara Lee's office was not able to get the certificate to because her office is closed due to having to be clean for COVID issues or whatever. But again, her and her staff send you, congratulations. Meredith is, like I said, she's an amazing person. I have sat with her on the ACCT board. When she first came on board, I said, I am not going to Washington in February. And Meredith would say, you're going. And I said, no, I'm not. And trustee Withrow and Meredith and I, and I think one time Jelena was able to join us. But every February, we're there in Washington for the Legislative Lobbying Month, a week or so after doing Sacramento for the lobbying week there as well. And we, sometimes we would clock 19,000 steps going just between the House and the Senate, back and forth, along with our lobbyists. And Meredith has just been an incredible asset to that. And at the same time that we're doing the meeting at the House and stuff, and they always say they want to hear from us, they want to hear from the trustees, they want to hear from the students directly. So we've been able to do some great things and to bring back a considerable amount of money for a diesel program at Laney, a program to get our aviation building done. All of that, it comes from the work that we've done. And also creating partnerships for potential international students to come as well. And then at the same time, serving on the ACCT Board, which is the National Trustees Board. And when we first started that, we realized that we needed to make some changes on the African-American caucus. We had a very small caucus there, but we were surprised to learn that every trustee is not elected. Some are appointed, and some of them are appointed for 19-year terms. And that, we realized then that it was very important that whatever happens in California moves across the world, across to other places. And where other people may not have the ability to really stand up for their beliefs around the educational system, California was very unique in that we were elected, we have a voice. And we decided to take over that caucus. And in that period of time, we went from having about 20 people where they spent one hour introducing themselves to spending about four years taking that over and bringing in young trustees from all over the states, getting the young trustees to step up to the plate for leadership because we think they need wisdom, and they also need fierceness and energy, which comes with youth. And our last session, I have a picture of over 100 people sitting in on that caucus. And that is so much because of Meredith Brown and her dedication. She also served on committees for ACCT. And I remember one year, Meredith and Jelena sitting in a meeting for the Pacific Region. And I'm sitting in the back looking at Facebook on my phone because I was not a member of that committee. And I get a warning text from Jelena saying, Linda, heads up, I think you're about to get nominated by Meredith. And I was screaming, "No, my name gets called." And the next thing I know, I'm two years spending on the committee, on the nominated committee for the Pacific Region. Meredith does it, and she will drag you along kicking and screaming. And you're always grateful later that you've done it. But trust me, for me, it's always kicking and screaming. And she has managed to drag us from all across California in her mommy van that does not, they have wheels, but if they don't touch the ground, they fly. And I remember getting to a Bay 10 meeting behind, I don't know how that happened. But with Meredith and her better half, which is Guy, who has been along with this as well, we have accomplished incredible things. And especially with the CCLC and the African Amendment, helping us to get not only the African American Caucus, but the Latino Caucus, and the, now we have a female, we have a women's caucus, and we have the Veterans Caucus, and then we have the Joint Caucus. And then she would also get her law firm to support. So the commitment that this person has had and what we have gotten out of her eight years is absolutely incredible. So you all know that all the things that Meredith has done, and I'm not going to give you all the information, but I just need to give some comments from Linda Wa, who says, "All Meredith's accomplishments is her service to a number of CCL committees and programs. She's developed leadership training programs for the trustees, lending her legal expertise to the perspective. Meredith's passion for the diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives led to the CCLC developing a DEI certificate of excellence to augment the excellent and trustee ship certificate." Something else I said I wasn't going to do, and Meredith said, "You're doing." And I did it. "Meredith developed the curriculum and shaped the discussion to help trustees move the needle. When the trustees were called to DEI action, Meredith stepped up to lead the discussion for one of the work groups and served on the steering committee to plan the strategy. And as the chair of the ACCT DEI Committee, Meredith wrote the guidelines and drove the discussion at the national level to bring attention to the actions needed to address inequities faced by underserved populations. The guideline manual is now published and utilized in the professional development program for trustees across the nation." And we can't talk enough about her work with the joint caucuses to support the disaggregation of data in our districts. This has been huge to make sure that we are able to support all of the different groups and not just count one subgroup and think that everyone is going to be successful. So I just have to say that Meredith is just an incredible person. And I think that I'm a better trustee for her, and I think many of us are. Because when you have people like Karen, and Karen took on the DACA piece, and Meredith's taken on the state of, those things are just invaluable. That is not part of the trustee's handbook. This is when people step out of their comfort zone because they see what needs to be done and they want to make it all right. So Meredith, I'm not going to miss you because unfortunately, she's dragged me onto another board, you guys. I successfully failed retirement because this woman is always getting me out there working. But the blessing is when we see the success of our students, when we see something like Carolina, who is now working at the district, and we see our students who are now executive directors of programs in our city. Then we know that our work is well done. So Meredith, I would say you can rest now, but I know you're not. I mean, this is the woman who flies in, spends all day in our caucuses. And if you go to her room, she's there in her pajamas, in the middle of her bed, working, doing her legal work. Because being a law partner, she had to do all of it at the same time. So I don't think you're going to get any rest because you've probably put in three different boards to take place of this one. But we will miss you. I know you're not leaving Peralta or Oakland, but we will miss your sense of humor and we will miss your expertise here. But job well done, Meredith. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
Jesse Handy.
Everyone.
Trustee Brown, we're not going to let you talk yet. Hold on. We're not done. We're not done with you yet.
There you go.
I want to acknowledge Superintendent Tony Thurman, who has been gracious enough to join us. So welcome, Superintendent Thurman.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, trustees and chancellor, and to everyone in the Peralta family. It is an honor to be able to say just a few words of thanks and gratitude to trustees Brown and Weinstein. And I know that I see my good friend, Mary Libby Schaaf there. She was chiding me because I changed my background. I tried to get cool and put an Oakland virtual background. Then I thought, well, I don't know if that's in Meredith's district. And I don't know if it's in Karen's either. But I can tell you that you both have been champions for our students, our system. I'm so proud of you. I have not known a day in politics without knowing Meredith Brown, not just what she has done at Peralta, but what you have done for the local political scene, for African Americans, for all people, in supporting political causes and championing political causes. I thank you and I thank Karen for really providing, like the other trustees, stability to the Peralta Community College District. It is truly a gem and a resource for our students. And like many systems, when there have been hard times, we've had leaders like yourself and Member Handy and Member Boulina and others who have just maintained the course, the importance of public education, the importance of funding education. I want to thank you, Karen, for always raising the importance of our dreamers. I want to thank you always for raising the importance of mental health needs of our students. You know, having had my assembly district overlap with much of your trustee district, I appreciate a number of the issues that you've worked on for the Berkeley City College and for addressing the needs in and around Berkeley. I also thank you, both you and Meredith, really have been champions for what I would call democracy and champions in democratic politics. And I don't say that to be partisan. I say that to say that you all have been champions for making sure that we have transparency and good leaders who are involved in a political process. You both have been outstanding leaders in that way. And I'm grateful for your service. I'm grateful for what you've done for Peralta students. And I'm looking forward to what you do next and hope to have the chance to continue to connect with you and serve with you again in the future. Thank you both. Like Linda said, this ain't no retirement. You don't get to rest. We know you're going to keep on working on behalf of the people. So thanks for what you do, and congratulations to you both.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. So I want to thank Karen for serving on that committee, for putting in all that time, and Bill Withrow for putting in all that time on the Security and Safety Committee. That's where we really started to get moving on a lot of our security and safety issues, which Ethereum Smith is going to make sure get carried all the way across the finish line. So that is a progress and transition requires that everybody join in. And so I thank you. Thank you for that, Karen. And thank you to my colleagues on the board, those who are present and past, for your contribution. I want to thank Kevin Jeekins for taking up the mantle of District Seven. I appreciate that very much. And also thank you to all of my colleagues. And also, I want to say thank you to Libby also for your taking up the cause of our immigrant students and our residents. That was actually Linda Wa answered that call back when, in 2016, when we got a new administration and it was necessary for students to know that they were respected and appreciated, no matter what their immigration status. And so that was the beginning of a lot of work with the statewide trustee board. And then it just kept going from there until we, you know, we just developed more. So thank you, everyone, who has contributed. And Bill, for leading the Veterans Caucus and being part of the Joint Caucus and for working with us to try and get second chance Pell for our students and to try to get the GI Bill to cover the summer and to cover additional months so our veteran students can have more options and support in their education. There were so, and for Jelena braving the cold and going to all sorts of little offices to try and raise money for our campus when we were back in Washington for those ACCT meetings, turning that into an effort to advance and advocate for Peralta in addition to professional development for trustees. So I appreciate all of that work. And thank you, Linda, for the work you've done to gather together some of the people that we've worked with in this process and over these eight years. And we have maybe, actually, I don't know that we have any of our original college presidents still with us. But I remember in 2012, knowing that we needed to get Peralta off of accreditation warning and get presidents in all of our colleges. And the work that it took to do that and to pass an $800,000 bond and a $200,000 parcel tax, that was a heavy lift. It took a lot of work. And thank you to everyone who served on the committees for finance and budget, as well as recruitment and enrollment and retention. There's been a lot of work that's caught into Peralta to make it a place where our students and our community can feel at home and to provide that parcel tax that will support our classes and our faculty. So it's been quite a bit of work. There's a lot more that needs to be done with actually. I'm glad that Kevin, you'll be sitting there in that District Seven seat to make sure that we continue to work towards a better Peralta. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you for that. Thank you, both trustee Weinstein and trustee Brown. You are both deeply, deeply appreciated. And we will miss you both. We've learned so much from both of you. But we know that you're not leaving our community. So we expect to continue, to continue our work together as you both transition into prioritizing other parts of the work that you both do. So appreciate you dearly. I just want to echo, everything Linda said was true. Some of it sounded incredible, including the wheels that lift and levitate. Trustee Brown's car is all real, that she didn't make any of this up. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and move us into...
Actually, President Benia, I don't think we circled back around to Karen. She never ought to say anything. She just...
Oh, trustee Weinstein.
Circle back around. I know we're late.
Trustee Weinstein.
Please just...
I know.
Let's close that up.
There's so much going on, but trustee Weinstein, please.
Okay, I want to thank everybody. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve. And I want to thank all the people who helped me run for this position and also the people who helped me stay on this position because this is a challenging position to be on. I want to thank our trustees for doing the work that they do. I want to particularly thanks Jelena for us working so closely together with really hard work that we had to do from the beginning of the morning to the end of the night. It was really pretty incredible. And thank you so much for your service and for what I've learned from you. And thank you so much, Cindy. You're always there and you're always supportive. I really appreciate that. Nikki, thank you so much. We've been together for a long time. And I want to thank you for your courage and your encouragement. We've worked, I think, very well together, and I appreciate that. Bill, you have a great sense of humor, and I don't think people realize that, but you certainly have a good humor and you certainly have tried to make things better here at Peralta. And Linda, thank you so much for the work that you do for the students. I know you go on trips and you try to help them, and you're also helping them with food insecurity. And so I thank you very much for that. And when we used to sit next to each other, you used to ask me about the food that I was eating, and perhaps I was eating too much. So I really appreciate that. It was a lot of fun, actually. And Meredith, thank you so much for the work that you've done around equity and kind of introducing me into the caucuses. That's something that I was shying back from. And I want to thank my husband, my son, and my friend Randy because without them, I really don't know what I would have done. I needed a support. This has been a tough district these past four years, and they've been very, very helpful. And I also do want to thank Alenny Gastes for the work that she has done with the citizen and the reporters, and also my friend Jennifer Shunovsky. And I want to, and of course, I've thanked already Carolina Martinez. And I also want to thank my friends, Janet Stromberg, Wendy Bloom, Mary Nicely, Dimitri, also Jeff Khan, Mary Summers, Eager Tregev, Andy Kelly, Sess, Maha, Annie. You know what? This, you know, it takes a village to be on this district, really. And I want to thank all the people in the community who've come to our meetings and to add to their voices, because we need their voices, their voices from the community and from our students. Because if our students and the community have a strong voice, we will be a strong district. And so I want to thank them, and there's many of them as well. And last, I want to say that I carry two experiences around with me. One was when I came home when I was 11 years old, and there was a foreclosure sign on the door. And the part that I remember about that was that the first thing I did was try to pull that foreclosure sign down. And the sheriff did a great job of nailing it in. And you cannot get that foreclosure sign off when it is tacked on there. And that was a very humiliating experience. And I also want to say one other one, which is when I was registering for a course, they wouldn't let me register. And when I walked away, there was a whole line of students. When I walked away, the person said, "Tell your parents to pay their bills." There must have been 30 or 40 students there. That is horrible and embarrassing. We, poverty or intermittent poverty is not just about not having the money, but it's also about making people feel less than. And our government has done that. We have an opportunity to change that. We have an opportunity to treat our students with respect and make sure that they receive and they understand that Peralta is a family for them and that if we can help them with housing, with food insecurity, with the classes, with so many different, and with respect, then we will have done our job. And I believe we will be successful. So I wanted to add that because those two things guide me. Let's try to bridge those divisions by speaking to each other. Please, let's, well, I won't be there, but for the trustees to speak with each other and reach out to students and show them that we care. They are the most important thing. And the last thing is from one of my favorites, Winston Churchill. And what he said is, "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak, and courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen." And I hope that I've been able to do both. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Karen. That was very heartfelt, and I appreciate that. And also from trustee Brown. And with that, I will, with a heavy heart, transition us to our swearing-in ceremony. So we have four trustees, two incumbents, and two brand-new trustees who we are welcoming to our Peralta Board of Trustee family. So we'll go ahead and begin with the administration of the first oath to be done with trustee Deanna Pope. And I know Deanna is here on my screen. I just have...
I'm here.
Here, there you are. As soon as you talk, you'll pop up on my screen.
Okay. Yes, and Mayor Aragín will be swearing in.
Fantastic. So I will go ahead, Mayor Aragín, and let you proceed with administering the oath.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's really a real honor to be able to swear in the two Berkeley representatives on the Peralta Board of Trustees. Trustee Constance Unal, she'll ask me to swear in as well this evening, both of whom I've known for many years and worked very closely with. And I'm particularly excited that Deanna is joining the Peralta Board of Trustees. You have big shoes to fill. Karen has done an incredible job. But I know that your deep commitment to equity and to diversity and supporting empowerment and success of young people will guide your work. And Berkeley looks forward to working very closely with you. to working very closely within your new positions. So on a personal level, Deanna's a personal friend of mine for many years, and it's just a real honor and a pleasure to be able to administer the oath of office to you today. So, thank you for running. Thank you for your service to our students and to our community. And I know you're going to do an incredible job in this position. So with that, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Deanna Delphine Polk, do solemnly swear or affirm-
I, Deanna Delphine Polk, do solemnly swear and affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Trustee Delphine Polk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Aragín. I look forward to working with everyone.
Deanna, I know this is, and thank you so much. Congratulations. Normally, normally, we would have you and your family and loved ones and friends and community all kind of gather around you and snap, snap, snap. We'd take a ton of pictures. And here's what I will offer to you in lieu of that, that the moment, the moment that we come back into our next phase of in-person contact, that we will specifically set that up so that you can enjoy and also celebrate with your family members.
Thank you, President Bonilla. I appreciate that.
That's important. It's very important.
It is. It is. And it's okay. You bring your entire community of folks with you. So-
There'll be a lot of people, so. Thank you.
And so we'll move next to Kevin Jenkins, Trustee Kevin Jenkins, and-
Trustee Bonilla, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I know that there were community members that were going to sign on to see the swearing in, but I'm only seeing two pages on my screen. Are they in a different room? Am I unable to see it? Are they there?
That is a good question for our, were they here and now they're not?
No, I've only had two pages the whole time, which is pretty much us and the other presenters.
You can see the list of participants if you hit the-
But we're not seeing their faces as before, as you scan through the pages?
Yeah, I see 85 attendees.
Yeah, but only two pages.
They're all watching, but unfortunately, they're not panelists on the webinar.
Okay, so they're there. They're able to see this. That's-
I can see, I can see 85-
Okay, great.
-active participants. So with that, we will move to the oath to be administered to Kevin Jenkins.
And I think that honor falls to me, the mayor of Oakland. So lots of mayors tonight. If I can just quickly add, Kevin, it's a true honor to get to swear you in. I have had the privilege of working with Kevin prior to his running for this office. So I know that he is wildly intelligent, dedicated, and also really gets the power of collaborations among our different public agencies, as he was an impact table project manager for the Youth Ventures Joint Powers Authority. That's how we actually got to know each other. And to really demonstrate that Kevin is someone who can work across the aisle, he is an Oakland High Wildcat, and I am a Skyline Titan. So the fact that he's allowing me to swear him in shows that he can welcome all, all. But seriously, it is awesome to have such a beautiful and accomplished human being, someone who has gone through the Peralta system, gone through the Oakland Public Schools, a proud, born and raised Oakland native, and also a beautiful father, I may add. So Kevin, it is really an honor to get to swear you in as a trustee of the Peralta Community Colleges. And if you would raise your right hand, it is my honor to administer the oath to you at this time. Are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I, Kevin Jenkins, do solemnly swear or affirm-
I, Kevin Jenkins, do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And alliance to the Constitution of the United States-
And bear alliance to the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservations-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. You are now officially a trustee of the Peralta Community Colleges.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate it. Thank you, Trustee Brown. I appreciate you passing the torch to me. I look forward to working with everyone to improve the lives of Peralta students.
Fantastic. Thank you and welcome, Trustee Jenkins. We will now move to, and again, I'm offering the same, that when we come back to our next phase of in-person, that you will bring your family, friends, and community to celebrate in-person so that we can capture the moment. So we'll move on to Trustee Withrow, who is serving, oh, Trustee Withrow, I don't know what term this is for you.
Five.
Fifth term. Your fifth term. And Trustee Withrow, who will be administering the oath to you?
Mayor Ashcroft.
Thank you.
All right. Well, hello again, everyone. And that is a tough act to follow, I just have to say, Trustee Jenkins and your more than adorable son. And it has been such a privilege just to be part of this event this evening. Such moving remarks we've heard tonight, and it just really demonstrates to all of us the huge value of the Peralta Community Colleges system. So it is my honor and privilege to have been asked by Trustee Withrow to administer the oath of office to him, not only because the College of Alameda is a very important community resource in my community, but also because Trustee Withrow is a former mayor of the city of Alameda. And he knows that from time to time, I pick up the phone and say, "Bill, I need to bounce something off you." And he's always ready to listen, and I am grateful for that. And so I'm so happy that you're back to serve another term. And I just know that this new school year in 2021, like so much of new, what's going to be new in 2021 is going to be good. So we're all looking forward to a new beginning. So with that, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And I have to say, I didn't realize you had another first name, but I, Edward Bill Withrow-
I, Bill Withrow-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States and the- Go ahead.
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties upon which-
The duties upon which-
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Trustee Withrow. Keep up the good work.
You know, one thing about the swearing-in process is this comment down here, that we're going to defend against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I find that very interesting for a, you know, one thing as a mayor or a captain in the Navy, but what is a trustee of the colleges supposed to do? What enemies do we have? Anyway.
Our mayors will let us know.
Yes. We'll be there for you.
Probably the troops.
To which I might reply, how much time do you have? But we're going to keep-
Donald Trump. Oh.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thanks, everyone.
Congratulations, Trustee Withrow, and thank you, Mayor Ashcroft. So we will move to our next incumbent trustee, Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. And the oath will be administered by, I believe, Mayor Apegi.
Well, it's my honor once again to administer the oath to Trustee Nikki Gonzalez Yuen, who served with incredible distinction on the board since 2004. I remember when Nikki ran for the first time in 2004 to replace Daryl Moore. And he's been a real true advocate for Berkeley City College and for the city of Berkeley and the students, not just at Berkeley City College, but throughout the whole Peralta system. And we're just so honored that you represent the city of Berkeley, and we look forward to your continued service on the board. So with that, I am very pleased to administer the oath of office to you. If you raise your right hand, Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. I, Nikki Gonzalez Yuen, do solemnly swear or affirm-
I, Nikki Gonzalez Yuen, do solemnly swear and affirm-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without-
Or purpose of evasion-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Trustee Gonzalez Yuen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Aragín. And I'm not going to say a lot, but I will say this. We got work to do, like, quite seriously. We are coming through a period of just extraordinary devastation in all of our communities. We all know this. We represent those communities. We're fighting for those communities every day. And we actually do have enemies in this country right now, though I wish we could turn them to friends. Right now, they're acting like enemies, and we can't forget that. We have public health crisis that's devastating our communities, and then we have our own internal problems, just basic stuff. So let's not pick unnecessary fights. We got big enough fights, and we're going to meet all of us, every single person in this room. We're going to need all of us to get some important stuff done. And I really am excited about working with everybody and this new board, our two new trustees. I think you will, you got huge shoes to fill, but you're huge people. So I'm really excited to be working with both you. Let's get some big stuff done. Thank you. President Bonilla.
Congratulations, Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. Thank you, Mayor Apegi. Thank you, Mayor Schaaf. Thank you, Mary Nicely. Our heartfelt thanks to Superintendent Tony Thurman for also coming out. Mayor Ashcroft, thank you so much. And David Silverman, I want to thank you also. If I forgot anyone else, counting on my trustees to let me know and fill in the blanks. And so, welcome. This is a new board. And again, thank you all for participating and helping with the award ceremony and the swearing-in. And with that, we're going to switch back to our regular programming of the Board of Trustees meeting. I will give our board clerk a few minutes to, or just probably just a few seconds, to either mute or to give a few folks who are going to naturally just kind of fall off. So strange that we're doing this. This is, obviously, this is the first time that we've done a swearing-in and award ceremony. I think it went fairly well, all things considered. But I really can't wait until we are in a large room, being able to really celebrate with family, friends, community, and lots of picture-taking. I really miss that, and I miss seeing everyone's families. And so we want to make sure that we come back to that. We will move to the next portion of our agenda, which is roll call. So I'll go ahead and just do an official roll call. And I'll have Board Clerk Jameson go ahead and call us out for that.
Okay. Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
No, it's now Jenkins.
Not-
Not until-
Yet, not until-
The 14th.
Ah.
Yeah.
The 14th is official.
Oh, okay.
So, Trustee Brown.
No, she's not on.
Not on any court. Okay. Trustee Handy.
Here.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez Yuen.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla.
Here, thank you.
Madam President, we do have corn.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item 2.6. Madam Vice President, do we have a report out from closed session?
Yeah, Madam President, at tonight's closed session, which seemed like hours ago, the board voted on the following items. Number one, approve ratification of the Chancellor's appointment of Stephen Chan as the interim Associate Vice Chancellor for Planning and Institutional Research, District Office, effective November 16, 2020 through November 15, 2022, at 149,874 annually. Motion by Trustee Yuen Gonzalez Yuen, seconded by Bill Withrow, Trustee Withrow, seven i's, zero no's, and zero abstentions. Number two, approve ratification of the Chancellor's appointment of Dr. Ronald McKinley, effective November 30, 2020 through June 30, 2021, at 207,517 annually. Motion by Trustee Gonzalez Yuen- Motion by trustee Gonzalez U.N., seconded by trustee Withrow, seven i's, zero n's, zero abstentions. Number three, approve recommendation to appoint Nicole Kelly as the Acting Director of Student Activities and Campus Life, Laney College, effective December 9, 2020, through October 27, 2021, at 103,759 annually. Motion by trustee Gonzalez U.N., seconded by trustee Withrow, seven i's. Number four, approve recommendation to appoint Gary Albury as the Acting Associate Dean of Educational Success, Laney College, effective December 9, 2020, through October 27, 2021, at 126,816 annually. Motion by trustee Gonzalez U.N. and seconded by trustee Withrow, seven i's. Number five, approve recommendation to amend the salary of President Vesikov from range four, 207,517, to range five, 219,046, effective November 11, 2020. President Vesikov's appointment as the president of Laney College was approved by the board at its November 10, 2020 board meeting. However, the salary recommendation was incorrect. Motion by trustee Gonzalez U.N., seconded by trustee Withrow, seven i's. And lastly, approve the settlement agreement in contract grievance and case number RG Motion by trustee Withrow, seconded by Gonzalez U.N., seven i's. And Madam President, that concludes the report out from closed session this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Let's go ahead and move to approval of the agenda.
If, point of privilege?
Yes, trustee Gonzalez.
I'm just like, if there are any of those newly appointed administrators here, I'd like to, I don't know how to do it. Give us an emoji, a clapping emoji, a stand-up emoji.
How about, how about wave your hand if you're here in the room?
Just wanna express our gratitude for your leadership in our communities. It's really important. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, and that was really important. Congratulations to all. I also have an ask before I continue on, and I started to do this. But if you all can add your title to your name, that would be fantastic. If you're a college president, please put down your college, your president, college trustees, most of you, I've put trustee at the edge, at the, your name. I also went in and did this for the chancellor. I just think that's really important. But you all can do that. And so as you're working on that, we will go for item 2.7, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Show them over.
Second.
Second.
And it's in second. May I have a roll call, please?
Hey, trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Ask a point of clarification. Can you guys hear me?
Can hear you now, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. What a clarification. We just swore someone else in?
We did, trustee Brown, but we did this as a ceremony, just as the ceremonial portion. They will be officially, we will do a changing of the guard. So just heads up, trustee Brown, you're coming back on Monday.
Okay, so.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Natasha's shaking her head. Natasha, do you want to clarify?
Tuesday.
The only point of clarification was just that trustee, the new trustees' terms begin on Friday, the 11th, and trustee Weinstein and trustee Brown's terms end on Friday.
End on Friday.
That was the year, the legal change that, okay. So I understand now. I was thinking that you can't, once you swear someone in under the Constitution, they have that office officially, but that there was the change in the law, which then sets the term.
Okay.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you so much, trustee Brown.
Thanks for clarifying, Natasha.
Okay, so we're gonna have to. We're voting on the agenda?
On the agenda, yes.
Okay, so then I got another clarification. Didn't we get a meeting saying things were moved? I'm very confused as to what we're doing at this meeting.
You have on this, you have three informational items, and our board and our Board of Trustees report out. That's it. And of course, we have public comment.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm going to abstain on this because I do not believe that the moving of the agenda items was appropriate. So I will abstain because I think we may have done that in error.
Okay, thank you for that. That was an abstention. And we'll continue with the roll call.
Okay. Trustee Handy.
Yeah, abstention for the same reasons.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez U.N.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Cindy, I think.
Trustee Reese.
You were muted, there's something.
Now we can. Did she say yes? Sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. And trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 2.8, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Show them over.
The second.
Second.
Thank you. We'll do roll call.
Hey, trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U.N.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 2.9, Associated Student Government Reports. Madam Vice President, do we have any speakers or students?
We have Liam. I'm going to move him up from the attendees.
It looks like we also have Alicia Raya. I believe she's part of our Associated Student Government.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
They are joining now. And they're on now.
Thank you. And so we will, Madam Vice President, can you see who's there?
Room, would you like to go ahead and speak?
I'm sorry, did you say my name?
Sure, Liam, since you're right there, go ahead and speak, Liam.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, President Bonilla, members of board, Dr. Walter, and guests. First, on behalf of the BCC student body, I'd like to thank trustee Weinstein and trustee Brown for your service and commitment to student success. I'd also like to congratulate trustee Polk and trustee Jenkins for joining the Peralta board. I'm looking forward to working with you in upcoming semester and beyond. And now I'd like to report on ASPCC activities in the past weeks. We hosted back-to-back events, which included a student circle discussion and a game night. So we were able to help students de-stress while also sharing with one another many transfer application advice. The ASPCC also planned a Thanksgiving celebration two weeks ago in collaboration with several student club organizations within the Inter Club Council. Following a meeting between Vice Chancellor Brown and ASPCC presidents, the ASPCC met with members of ASLC and ASMC and other student leaders and held discussion around the implementation and contract of the Honor Lock software. The students expressed severe, several concerns, and in the future will look to recommend modifications to the current Honor Lock process to better advocate for student rights and wishes. And that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Liam. Our next speaker is Alicia.
Greetings, trustees. Since the last time we've talked, the ASLC has been hard at work. We recently wrapped up our We Kill Us Week, which was a series of daily workshops offered to students that were all centered around bringing traditional and holistic mental health wellness to Laney's virtual campus. Each workshop was created and ran by Black, Indigenous, and other healers, herbalists, artists, and mental health workers of color who are based in the Bay. It was a privilege and an honor to hold space with each of them, and I hope that this will be a tradition moving forward. As council, we recently voted to allocate resources for a hot food and mask distribution that will take place next week for sure, but tentatively next Thursday at 1:00 p.m. But again, emphasis on the tentative, I urge all students to follow AS Laney College on Instagram or monitor your student email closely for the update with a confirmed time. You won't want to miss the delicious food our very own culinary department will provide, along with the masks. We will have Laney cloth masks in a box of surgical masks to be distributed to all students who come on first come, first served basis for free. And as council, we unanimously voted to endorse the holistic health and safety plan created by Peralta's own staff, students, and professors, who are members of the Peralta's Black Minds Matter Group. Our council voted this way because as students and as BIPOC students, a council of all BIPOC students, if I may add, we understand that mental health counselors and housing and resources to meet our basic needs is how we stay safe and supported. And again, it is an honor to be able to lead during a time where this vision for holistic safety is no longer aspirational, but well in our reach. Speaking of safety, thank you again for your unanimous decision to end policing in Peralta's district. And please, if I may, remind you that your decision must be met with action. I have a deep trust and faith that each of you will not undermine your historic and community-informed decision by prolonging this process to hire the new community-oriented security firms. You have never had to recreate the will, as these organizations exist already, and just need your leadership to begin working on behalf of Peralta students. And if you choose to renew the contract with the sheriff, this will send a clear message to your students that your devotion to make bold, innovative action that is in solidarity with your Black and Indigenous and other historically minoritized and subjugated students is only true under pressure and mass attention, which I know is not true. So I implore you to not send this message. I, along with my peers on the council, are waiting to be reassured that you'll keep your word and support the visions within this holistic safety plan that has been endorsed by multiple shared governance bodies across the various colleges at Peralta. Black lives matter, Black minds matter, and I am proud to be a leader in a district that upholds this. And I know that in a place like the Bay, we don't have to live in scarcity. And the students' needs like housing and mental health counseling should be a priority. And as president, I'll continue to do my part to advocate for this. So thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. And I believe that those are the only public comments for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Liam, and thank you, Alicia, for enlightening us with all of the amazing work that you all do as students in this community. So we'll move to item 2.10, Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Madam President, just point of order.
Yes, trustee Gonzalez.
I'm not sure, but I think.
Hello.
Other public comments, and I'm wondering, does public comment come before? Or were you planning to reorder the?
I am not reordering. We're going straight through the agenda as is.
I'm sorry. Okay, so public comment comes after.
Yes.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did I hear?
Hello, this is Terrence. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, that's great. Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Waters, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have one classified Senate campus report and a concern over the Peralta Police Transition Plan. This report is from the Merritt College Classified Senate. The Senate met with Dr. Johnson to discuss concerns regarding adequate classified support to the Vice President of Administrative Services, which will oversee both business services and facilities operations, and have come to an agreement to support the position with the following recommendations as presented. A, upgrade one of the facility services specialist positions to facilities project coordinator. There are two facility services specialist positions under the business facilities department structure as specified in the administrative organizational chart. Dr. Johnson expressed support of this recommendation on the contingency of funding availability. This position is a classified position that is equivalent to a project manager, which we feel would be a great asset to have in the facilities department and align with providing support to facilities operations and the Vice President of Administrative Services in place of having a director of facilities. B, provide the Vice President of Administrative Services with a staff assistant in the Vice President's office. This position would support the Vice President of Administrative Services. The second part of the Merritt report is about the police transition plan. On behalf of Merritt Classifieds and as Senate President Tichetta Henry, I am concerned regarding the Peralta Police Transition Plan. Many classifieds have expressed safety concerns as there have been incidents over the years, which have required Peralta Police presence. Examples, there was an assault on an employee. Some of the buildings had been broken into. And most recently, an individual was shot during sideshow activities in one of Merritt's parking lots across the street from our campus. Although we are currently working remotely, there is high concern regarding the safety of all constituencies, faculty, staff, and especially our students, when we are allowed to return to campus. Merritt is a campus that is secluded and remote in the Oakland Hills, which increases our concern that without police presence, safety risk will increase over time, especially for classes that have been offered in the evening prior to COVID, in which safety risks increase at night for students, classified, faculty, and administrators that work in the evening. I personally, along with many of my colleagues, are uncomfortable to return to campus without police presence and feel that considerations should be given regarding our safety. Next, we have classified general concerns over the Peralta Police Transition Plan. As we move closer to December 31st, classifieds throughout the district have approached the Peralta Classified Senate to share their safety concerns regarding the current Peralta Police Transition Plan. When it was decided to end the ASO, or ACSO, contract with the deputies as of December 31st, the board charged Department of General Services, DGAS, with identifying companies to provide security. But so far, no plan has been put into place that covers all the services the Peralta Police provided. Just a few examples of the safety concerns raised are, we have no idea to whom registered sex offenders will report to when they attend classes in the Peralta District. Who will enforce the restraining orders that some students and staff have against former domestic partners? At the College of Alameda, a longtime classified employee said the sheriffs found, I'm sorry, the police department, found homeless people living in the portables, and they found bullets on campus. Just this Monday, a Laney College classified employee left their department and saw an altercation on East 10th Street adjacent to the Laney campus. One man had a younger man in a chokehold in the middle of the street. They called the Oakland Police Department. They told him they were busy, and they would send an officer as soon as they could. Then the employee called the Peralta sheriffs, who showed up before OPD. But by that time, the two combatants had separated and left the area. The employee described the two men to the sheriffs. There is very little confidence amongst the staff regarding the response time of the Oakland Police. The last bit of information we have is that there will be a different security company at each of the five work sites, which does not give us confidence. These are just a few of the concerns voiced by classified employees. We are the ones who come to our work sites in the darkness before the first rays of the morning sun. And we are the ones that have to walk to parking lots late at night. Classified professionals, students, and teachers need protection during operational hours. Classified professionals, students, and teachers need protection during operational hours. Peralta Classified employees' legitimate safety concerns are essential to their physical and mental well-being, and the district cannot ignore the problem. There must be a plan fully operating before the December 31 expiration of the Peralta Sheriff's Contract. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you for that report, and we will move to the District Academic Senate.
Thank you, President Bonilla. My name is Donald Moore. I'm the Academic Senate President for the district. I'd like to thank both Karen and Meredith for their service and look forward to the new ones coming on December 14th. As people know, this week is our last week of instruction. Next week is finals, so everybody is finishing up on things they have to turn in, and folks are turning in their work and being prepared for their finals, which will be given next week. This has been a rather long semester, and I'm thinking that our faculty are going to look forward to having a break. I wanted to raise up a issue that we all saw in an announcement by the chancellor this week. The chancellor raised up the stay-at-home order that's been issued in Alameda County and other counties. And in that, she indicated that for fall, the additional laboratory classes that we were looking to have face-to-face would not occur, and that only the current Essential CE courses will be offered face-to-face. And I sent the chancellor an email on this issue because it really raises up some concern for it. The faculty raised up to me that in an order dated 12/5/20, the Health Departments at Alameda and at Berkeley indicated that higher education institutions may offer in-person instruction for clinical training or classes in laboratory or studio classes only. In-person instruction is otherwise prohibited. And I know we are a higher education institution, at least that's what I continue to believe. And so when I see the fact that we aren't going to provide these face-to-face classes for our labs, it really distressed me because what I like to see us make decisions on is on the basis of data. And when you have the Health Department saying that higher education institutions should have these kind of classes, particularly laboratory classes, but studio classes and clinical classes as well, then you start to say, hmm, what's going on here? And then when they don't even look, when the chancellor does not even look at what we have been doing right now with the Essential Courses and how we have been adhering to safety and health guidelines and doing a wonderful job and a safe job of teaching our students in a more limited way. And that was going to be anticipated for the spring with the addition of the lab classes. So unfortunately, that hasn't occurred. So when you put those two factual items together, you wonder how did we come up with that decision? The faculty have been working carefully with the executives at the colleges to make this happen. And we know that the stay-at-home order is until the early part of July, I mean, excuse me, of January. And certainly, at that time, one could make a decision rather than making it here at the beginning of the stay-at-home order. We know that this stay-at-home order is a more nuanced stay-at-home order with conditions for businesses and so forth, and certainly for education, whether secondary education or for higher education. So I hope that the chancellor will relook at this issue and really, really look at what the benefits of sending our students to UC Berkeley, they're probably now getting their applications in right now, and they'll be noticed next spring. And so we're going to be sending these transfer students to Cal and other colleges and universities without ever having stepped into a college lab. And we say that they have the skills for that. And that's a very, very disappointment from these faculty who have been working so diligently to ensure the health and safety of their students, but still providing them with this important teaching moment. So my hope is that the chancellor and the presidents will relook at this issue and really kind of take a more nuanced approach to this and not this pandemic kind of, you know, steamroller that we did in the spring, which was warranted because it was something new to something that's much more nuanced now. So I wanted to offer that to the Board of Trustees and the public with the hope that all of us could encourage this chancellor and these presidents to really relook at this issue and try to address it in a way that will allow our students to be taught in a manner that they need in order to transfer or go into the industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, Donald. Madam Vice President, we are going to move into public communication. And can you let me know how many speakers you have for public comments?
Yes, Madam President, we have registered 55. But some of those individuals already speak, so I'm assuming we have about 48 people that will be speaking this evening. So, yes, go ahead.
So if it pleases the Board, when I look at public comment, we are always scheduled for 15 minutes of public comment. And when we have a large number of speakers, and we will address and we will hear from all of the speakers who are available to speak this evening, I am going to ask that we limit a hard stop one minute for each speaker. So I'm going to ask our board clerk that when 10 seconds prior to their one minute is up, to notify them, and then we're going to do a hard stop. So it will definitely be controlled by the board clerk. I'm also going to ask my trustees, as we move into our board retreat for next week, and we're looking at items around policy and practice, that we take up this issue because we do have a communication component in our board retreat. And so I'm going to ask the trustees to be focusing on that specifically to public communication. So with that, Madam Vice President, we will go ahead and move forward.
Yes. May I add, Madam President, that maybe another thing that we could do as well is have anybody who would like any of the speakers write their comments in the chat so that it becomes part of the documentation and so that we, as board members, are able to hear and see the rest of their chat if it wasn't reduced effectively to one minute.
Thank you for that.
All right, let's begin with our first few. So Jennifer Shonoski, Kimberly King, and Rick Becker. Jennifer, are you in the room?
Letting them in now.
Thank you.
I wasn't aware I was going to be on video, so I'm going to turn it off. I've never been a panelist before. So I'm going to be super fast. I'm going to focus tonight on gratitude and welcoming. I really want to welcome back trustees Gonzalez, Yuen, and Withrow. I look forward to continuing to work with you. I want to thank trustee Brown. I appreciate the time you've taken to talk with me about various issues, including my continued championing of a boot camp for science students and nursing students. And trustee Weinstein, Karen, I thank you for all you've done for our district over the years. I know that sometimes it can seem like you're not making a difference. But we just learned this last week that the contract we signed last spring will result in 100% parity for all part-time faculty across all columns and steps. This is a 10-year campaign that we've worked on, and the fact that you were on the Board made a difference. And it makes a difference to all of our contingent faculty now and going-
Sorry, 10-second warning, sorry.
That's okay. So thank you so much. I also want to welcome trustee Delphine Polk as another Cal grad and champion of labor, and also trustee Jenkins as another single-parent warrior and bringer of children to board meetings. I look forward to seeing you at many, many meetings in the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kimberly King, Rick Becker, and then Jeff Sensory.
Hi.
Hi, Kimberly.
Wow, okay, thank you. It would have been good if we knew we were going to be on camera, but I'm really happy that we are because it's more communicative. Hi, everyone. First, I want to say on behalf of myself, the Black Minds Matter at Peralta Group, and all the Bay Area students and community members who are so proud of the decision that the Board made on June 23rd to replace the sheriffs with a non-policing public safety approach. Peralta has a historic opportunity to be a national model for transformative justice. But we are very concerned that the community-based safety firms have not yet been hired. I urge the Board to ensure that the district completes the contracts ASAP and that the-
10 seconds, I'm sorry.
... communicate with the campuses that involve staff, students, community. Finally, I urge the district to implement the holistic safety plan that has mental health, restorative justice, and basic needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I have a question about Rich Becker. Does he have a different name? I'm not seeing a Rich Becker in the attendees.
Rick Becker.
Rick Becker.
No, maybe we'll keep on looking, and then we'll move on to a few others.
Okay.
Jeff Sensory, Abdul Holland, and Sierra Cooperwood.
Hello, this is Jeff Sensory. I just wanted to say, like, first I wanted to echo what, like, you know, Kimberly King said a moment ago. I think she has a lot of great things to say. I also want to thank Karen Weinstein for her service. It's been wonderful working with you, speaking with you, and harassing you at times. I want to extend that same thanks to Meredith Brown, who I've also harassed on many occasions. They have both done great work. I want to say that both of them are like hard, hard workers and have done wonderful work here with us. And lastly, I want to welcome the two new people that are coming with us, Kevin Jenkins and his son. Oh, wait, and Diana Delphine Polk also, who are going to do great work in the next four years, and we're looking forward to working with them. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Jeff. Abdul Holland.
He's coming in.
Hello, hi. I'm a student at Laney, football player. I'm an Oakland Broward kid, and today I received news that there would be a cancellation on the spring season and that I just wanted to speak for me and my teammates and that it would really ruin a lot of our teammates. I think it would really ruin some of our lives. I feel like a lot of my teammates will stop coming to school. I feel like the protocols are great. Coach B makes sure that it's six feet, no matter what. And I just want you guys to reflect on what it would do for the student athletes at Laney. Thank you.
Thank you, Abdul. We have Sierra Cooperwood, Deanna Griffin, and Armand Gray. Sierra, if you're available.
Don't see a Sierra on anymore. What's the next name?
Deanna Griffin and Armand Gray.
Okay, Deanna Griffin is moved up.
Thank you. And I'll just give you a couple more names. Armand Gray, Simone Jacobs, and Raven Richardson.
Okay, they're all coming in.
Thank you.
Oh, is it my turn to speak? So I just wanted to talk to all of you guys because with the the news that I received this morning, it really put me in a bad spot because I rely on sports to be my outlet. And now that I don't have that, it puts me in like a really bad space mentally because basketball is my outlet, and I also feel like that's my only way out. And because I'm not able to showcase my talents, I really feel stuck. And the main reason why I even went to Merritt was with the basketball, you know, program. And now that I feel like that I'm not able to, you know, showcase my talent, I really feel like I'm stuck. So I really just want you guys to really like think about how like this situation is affecting all of the student athletes and also how it's affecting me and my teammates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simone. Deanna Griffin and Armand Gray.
Yeah, hello. My name is Deanna Griffin. I'm a student athlete at Merritt College, women's basketball. And I would like to say that this news has like a negative toll on many mental, like, many people's mental health, basically. Like basketball, I'm piggybacking off my teammate Simone. It's like a go-to for some people with mental health problems. And it's like very important. And then like for some sophomores, it's like, this is it for us. We don't have anything after that. It's like our only way out. And it's like, after this, we don't know what we're going to do next, where we're going to go, like what is going to lead us to. And many sophomores are counting on this to get out, like recruitment-wise, sorry.
10 seconds?
And this is, this is it.
Thank you, Deanna. Armand Gray, Simone Jacobs, and Raven Richardson.
Yes, this is, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Armand Gray. First of all, I want to say thanks for having me. My name is Armand Gray. I'm the head women's basketball coach at Merritt College. I've been at Merritt College since 2012. I'm smart enough to know that my existence is not about me. It's about these student athletes, helping them realize their dreams, helping move them to the next level. I guess what I lament about most is the idea that the major stakeholders were not invited to the table when the decision was made to cancel sports at Merritt College. I get pausing spring sports, but just to say that you guys are going to cancel spring sports- But just to say that you guys are gonna cancel spring sports, I think that's absurd. If nothing else, our students do need an outlet. Not even, not just the students, but the coaches as well. We need an outlet. So, to be able to have face-to-face contact, but be social distancing with our students is, it's, it's an outlet. So, nothing else.
10 seconds.
If nothing else, let's definitely just kind of keep that in mind. Make sure that we can keep these athletes in a good space and consider, if nothing else, just to have some type of conditioning for the athletes. I do have a lot more to say.
Okay, let's go to Simone Jacobs, Raven Richardson, and Jesse Reynoso.
I thought I already spoke, but I mean, if you guys want to hear me speak again, that's fine. But I think I already spoke already.
My apologies. Let's go to Raven Richardson, Jesse Reynoso, and Ricky Townsend.
Hello, everyone. My name is Raven Richardson, a student athlete at Laney College. And I don't know if it concerns you guys or not, but the one-minute thing, you know what I'm saying? To, for us to be able to express, you know, what's going on within, you know, our personal lives as well as you guys' lives, you know, it's sort of short. But in my own personal being, you know, as far as student athletes all across the board, you know what I'm saying, like, at least me personally and my personal life, like sports and my academics, keep me out of the fact, it just keeps me out of trouble in general. Not saying that I look for trouble, but being for the fact that me just being the person that I am, and I'm pretty sure it's the same way for other students, just being in their own communities and everything. It keeps us out of endangerment of being killed, you know what I'm saying? Coach Bean, I'm pretty sure the other coaches and everyone else, you know what I'm saying? We do our protocols, we keep our mask on our face, we do everything that's required. So, I just want to know, like, what's the sudden cancellation of sports for all of us across the board? You know what I'm saying? Whether you guys care about that or not, could you at least give us some type of answer? Because we feel like you guys are taking something away from us that means a lot to us, you know? It is just like, what's going on? Like, you know, we thank you a lot, but come on, do y'all care? Like, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to individuals, if, if we cut you off, please go ahead and put all of your comments in the chat because we certainly want that documented and we want to be able to go back to it. Now, we could have Jesse Reynoso, if you're available, and then Ricky Townsend and Leona Gerardo.
Yes, hello, could you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I was not too sure about, about, I was the only one that felt a certain way about all this being canceled, but now I first, I certainly do after hearing all these athletes speak. So, yeah, for a lot of us, as I heard, sports are a thing that are keeping us in school. And for you taking away this season, that is, is basically gonna tell a lot of students that there, there's gonna drop out, you know? And it's, it's very sad to hear, but I feel like we should, we should make it, um, we should make it work. There's a lot of ways to have practice and prevent COVID. For example, like weekly test, checking your temperature, which we were doing. We were following all the protocols. So, I just really hope we could find a solution to keep these sports alive and keep more students coming into Merritt and all these other schools around us. That's it.
Thank you. Ricky Townsend, Leona Gerardo, and Rory Mir, M-I-R.
My name is Ricky Townsend and I run for Merritt Track and Field. And when I heard the new, the news about canceling spring sports, it really broke my heart because even before COVID, last spring, we were working, we were working out and just building ourselves to, to run for the season, but then COVID happened. And then since then, it's been a continuation of just working and just working, working, working ourselves to, for this next season that we've been motivating ourselves through. And the thing is with working out and practicing, like, through such a long amount of time really puts like a lot of stress on our body and minds. And it's, it just breaks my heart that we're not allowed to show our performance to these other colleges that could possibly give us scholarships. And it's just, even though that the season is, is canceled, we're not canceled, if that makes sense. Like, we're still here. And I feel like you didn't put us in consideration when you were, when you made this decision. Because I know for a fact that we were following guidelines. We were doing everything we can to keep everybody safe. And we're just, I'm just not saying this just to say this, but we were really genuinely fault, trying to follow like all the guidelines. Our coaches have worked and worked so much just to make this happen.
Thank you, Ricky. Please continue to put it all, all your comments in the chat box. Leona Gerardo, Rory Mir, and Daniela Dominguez.
Hi, all. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm gonna try to make it as quick as possible. My name is Leona Gerardo. I'm the athletic trainer at Merritt College. And I just wanted to give a quote from a, a survey given by the NCAA of May of 2020 that was a few months after everyone was staying at home. And it says, "Mental health concerns were the highest among respondents of color, those whose families were facing economic hardship and those living alone." Additionally, college seniors reported feeling a constant or nearly daily sense of loss at a 1.5 times the rate of underclassmen." And I just want you guys to think about that as the decision was hit this morning when their morale is already low. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leona. Rory Mir, Daniela Dominguez, and Janelle Tilletson.
Thank you, trustees. A different topic. I'm Rory Mir. I'm with the San Francisco nonprofit, The Electronic Frontier Foundation, an organization dedicated to defending civil liberties in digital technologies. I'm here to ask the board to help end the use of invasive online proctoring software that's become prominent in our move to remote learning. These proctoring apps make the impossible promise to completely control a remote student's environment by sacrificing their privacy. Remote students should not be forced to either fail a class or hand over their personal data or biometric data and have their homes, families, computers, et cetera, put under constant surveillance. These apps act like malware, putting students at risk, especially those of marginalized backgrounds, and deepen digital divides and inequalities. Proctoring software can also have biases against students that do not presume white, neurotypical, and able-bodied norm. Ultimately, even the promises of these apps to stop cheating will be undermined as there will always be students that are far more clever than these companies give them credit for. Again, please help end the normalization of surveillance in education. Thank you for your time.
Daniela Dominguez, Janelle Tilletson, and Francisco Zapata.
I don't see a Danielle, but Janelle should be in.
Okay. And then after Janelle, let's do Francisco Zapata and Richard Tholey.
Hello. This is Janelle Tilletson. I am the, I'm a Laney counselor and the chair of the Diversity Committee for the Peralta Federation of Teachers. I want to thank the Peralta community, including the District Academic Senate, for supporting the Diversity Subcommittee on Anti-Racism and Intersectionality that's working to bring the intergroup dialogues, diversity, equity, and inclusion training to Peralta. Very part, proud to be a part of this initiative. I also wish to thank the Board of Trustees for the June 23rd vote to terminate the ASCO contract. And I would like to urge the board to work with the district to finally carry out your innovative act to replace the sheriffs with a community-based security and to inform the community about the safety measures that would be implemented.
10 seconds.
The Black Minds Matter group has presented a holistic safety plan that would address some more pressing concerns, including the need for mental health counselors and meeting students' basic needs.
Thank you, Janelle. Francisco Zapata, Richard Tholey, and Andress Ekiania.
Francisco is on.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, I'm Francisco Zapata. I'm the head baseball coach at Laney College. Thank you for listening. I want to preface by saying that we care about the well-being of our student athletes and staff. I'm here to seek clarity on this morning's letter from our district chancellors that is very impactful to our student athletes. And that letter states that there's a pause on spring athletics for the 2021 season. I've got, the questions are, is there any intent of bringing spring sports back safely? If the circumstance, the circumstances allow it? Have we given enough time to assess the situation? And have we exhausted all avenues to provide the opportunity to our student athletes and to be in, and to bring in athletics safely? Given how impactful this can be for them mentally, financially, academically, and for the lack of opportunity. Our COVID team, Laney, has put a great deal of work with protocols and has secured testing in the spring, among other things. Also, one minute for such a magnitude of...
Sorry, 10 seconds.
One minute for such a magnitude of such a, such a big issue. It's just hard to get your, your thoughts across. And I would welcome further discussion on such an impactful matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco. Let's move on to Richard Tholey, and then we have Andress Ekiania, and then Andy Kelly.
Hi, good evening. I imagine you all can hear me. On behalf of SEIU 1021, I'd like to welcome all our new trustees, Diana Delphine Polk and Kevin Jenkins, and reintroduce them to the Peralta Community College District. I extend an invitation to each board member, new and otherwise, to dialogue with our dynamic group of well-intentioned and talented staff. SEIU members are becoming increasingly engaged in bettering operational details at Peralta and have several initiatives underway, including rolling out a professional development plan for classified staff and strategic preparations for bargaining a new contract agreement. SEIU takes its motto in solidarity seriously, to the extent that we believe Peralta can best serve its students, faculty, and administration if we are all working together and smarter together. And so, while the work ahead of us is tremendous, it is also worth acknowledging the amount of tremendous good work we have all accomplished. With that being said, and in my attempt to ensure the workers' issues aren't forgotten during these holidays and because of our frustration with the recent lack of communication from a Labor Relations Administrator, I directly bring your attention some of the concerns classified professionals will be sharing. Negotiating a new contract, lack of detailed transition plan for safety and security, and a dismissive attitude toward our membership in general.
Thank you, Richard. You can put the rest in the chat. Andress Ekiania, Andy Kelly, Michael Goldhopper.
So, I don't see the first two anymore. You see Michael Gold.
Let me give you a few more.
I will bring Michael Goldhopper in. He's coming in.
And then we have Todd Kane Ross and John Forbacher.
Hey, Bob, been moved up?
Can you hear me? This is Michael Goldhopper. I don't know whether any of the others are, are here.
Yes, we can.
Speaking now on behalf of Karen Weinstein. I thought there would be many people speaking, but the length of time in between shortens that. As Karen Weinstein's husband, I've been honored, blessed, and deeply impressed to observe firsthand over more than four years how seriously she has taken the responsibility to oversee and improve the workings of the entire Peralta system. The success of students was visibly her first priority with the needs of the teaching faculty in close seconds. Many days, she worked from getting up in the morning until going to bed at night to try to glean all the details, all the successes, and all the shortcomings and how to fix those. I'm glad she can now be a little more relaxed. And I'm sure the concerns of students and faculty and everyone else in the Peralta community will still be in her heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. You have your wife back. And let us move on to Todd Kane Ross, John Forbacher, and Derek Jones.
Hey, everyone. My name is Todd Kane Ross, and I'm a freshman at Merritt College, speaking on behalf of the member of like the soccer team and the athletic department. So, recently, as you, as you guys know, like, it's been a pause like on our spring season. And I just want to say, like, this is, this could be like very devastating to like the sophomores and freshmen, especially to the sophomores too because it's like they're transfer, they're like trying to transfer and like get looks to like go to the division, divisional colleges after leaving community colleges. And also the freshmen, because we were, we got our season taken away last spring. And many of us, many of us were having like scholarships and stuff to like colleges, but got that taken away because of COVID. And now, we, we've gone to the Juco's to try to get other looks. And as you know, this pause would like bring devastation on all of us because we brought a lot of commitment to our sport. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. John Forbacher, Derek Jones, Sean Fields.
Hello. Hi, my name is John Forbacher, and I'm a student athlete at Merritt College. As a student athlete who is graduating in May, this basketball season is very important to me as well as my teammates to get recruited. I, as well as my teammates, need the season to occur so we can have coaches evaluate us at the four-year level for a scholarship. I personally, just as many other athletes in the district, use sports as an opportunity to get an education at the four-year level. And if this season is canceled, it will highly reduce all of our chances to get recruited and lessen our chances to even receive education at the four-year level. Especially since, for me, I do not have the funds to afford a four-year level, a level education. And it is like that for many other students as well, who are Juco athletes. If other schools are playing and we are not, we, as the players, are a major disadvantage to getting recruited, getting our, our scholarship. I hope you guys, as a district, can reevaluate your decision of the season and as, because it affects so many students in the Peralta District.
Thank you, John. Can we go back to Andres Ekiania?
Yes, hello.
Yes, we can hear you, Andres.
Hello, trustees and hello, translator. My name is Andres Ekiania, and I'm a student athlete at Merritt College. I'm a part of Merritt College Track and Field Program, and I'm here to represent my fellow Peralta District student-athlete body and advocate to allow us to continue to train in hopes of pursuing our athletic and academic dreams. I speak as a third-year sophomore who needs this opportunity. I spent a great portion of my summer talking with my coach and athletic director, Brock Drazen, wondering if I'll get a chance to pursue my dreams through my passion. It's torturing to know that if I don't get the opportunity to compete, I do not have the financial means to continue on at a four-year university. I'm a good student with a chip on his shoulder, and I've adopted to the ways of online schooling, and I've adopted to the ways and things set forth for us to compete.
10 seconds.
I have to ask why I must continue to suffer the burden of, of not being able to compete when we have precautions set forth and we've been following them. As my school trainer stated, "For those living on their own and the risk of mental health, I'm glad for that reason you could see my face."
Thank you, Andres. Derek Jones, Sean Fields, Jaren Lillard.
All right, so I'm gonna move like, this is an auction because I only got one minute. My name's Derek Jones. I'm the head men's basketball coach at Merritt College. I just want to get on here and speak out because, you know, we had 12 weeks of on-campus conditioning where we went through protocols and, and followed all the rules, and it was very successful over a 12-week period. I understand that, you know, we have a stay-at-home order, but I think canceling things for the whole spring is looking too far ahead. We don't know where we're gonna be at from now until May. And I think we, we need to leave the door open to... And I think we need to leave the door open to return to campus for at least practice. You know, we have, I have five sophomores who are on track to graduate who've done the right thing in the classroom. And I want to be able to do my duty and do right by them and, you know, find places for them to play at the four-year level. And in order to do that, you know, if our season is canceled and we don't have games, I want to at least be able to get into the gym with them and, you know, film them in the gym, send that out to coaches and give them an opportunity to, to continue to pursue their dreams. You know, for a lot of these kids, you know, mental health, we talk about that so much. It was, it was on this call earlier. And it's important for these young people who are used to social interaction to, you know, help their mental health, to have interaction with coaches and to be on campus. So my hope is that we can at least leave the door open for a return.
Thank you, Derek. Sean Fields, Jaren Lillard, and Chauncey Viagraana are our next speakers.
Okay, so hi, I'm Sean Fields. I play for the Merritt Men's Basketball Team. And I'm really here to just kind of piggyback off what the other athletes were saying as well. You know, this is what we depend on. This is everything for us. Me, I'm, I'm in stock right now. So I don't know if you guys, you guys are in a whole nother district, you guys have your own problems, but you know, out here the homicides are up by like 59%. So me, I look forward to getting to the little Merritt campus every day, you know? That's the outlet that's gonna get me out of the city and go do something else and do something more, you know? And you know, it keeps me in school, you know, you have to have good grades to play. I'm under a great coaching staff. We have a great staff overall, you know? And I don't know when we'll ever get the opportunity like this again. So I think it's important that, you know, we kind of think about before we cancel anything about the sophomores. It's important that this is the last leg that we have, you know, because after this, we really don't know what's next, kind of like Deanna said, you know, we don't know what's next, what's gonna happen, so.
Thank you, Sean. Jaren Lillard, Chauncey Viagraana, Brock Drezen.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Chauncey.
Okay, perfect. My name is Chauncey Viagraana and I'm a student athlete at Merritt College. When I received the news this morning, I was actually in the middle of a workout and I was actually quite disappointed in it. Mainly because I'm a freshman and I've had the end of my high school season canceled. You know, so I know, I know the pain that it feels with and I know what my teammates are going through. Like them being sophomores, I'm a freshman here and I just want to be able to have the opportunity to not only, to not only take classes at Merritt College, but, but to be able to play games or at least practice. You know, I figured that, I figured that we all just want, we all want an opportunity to play and show these coaches that, you know, and show these coaches that we can, that we can play and give them reasons why they should, why they should recruit us. Basketball is my only way out and I feel like that if you guys cancel this season, it will hurt not only the sophomores, but the freshmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chauncey. Do we have Jaren Lillard in the room and then Brock Drezen and then Treshika Bennett?
Jared's not here, miss. He's at work tonight.
Thank you. Let's go to...
Thank you, trustees, chancellor, presidents, and all, and the Merritt College Athletic Director Brock Drezen. This morning I received the chancellor announcement that indicated not only would athletics be paused during the current Alameda County Health Stay-at-Home Order that lasts through January 4th, but that athletics will be paused in the spring semester as well, including outdoor athletic conditioning. This decision about the spring semester is premature. What data or evidence is this decision based on? I can tell you that I was not contacted for gathering any information. Our athletic trainer was not contacted for any information. None of our coaches were contacted and contacted and not a single student athlete at Merritt was consulted. In fact, on Sunday night, I spoke to our school president, David Johnson, and we agreed that we needed to abide by the Alameda County Health Department Order and shut down in accordance with their decision. Oh wow, you gotta be kidding. This is absurd and disgraceful. I'll put it in the chat.
You should let him finish. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Trustee Handy, that would be inappropriate because we'd have to afford that same speaking opportunity to everyone else.
He is an instructor and since this is the first that I am even hearing about this and I'm a trustee and others, I would like to know what's going on. And so if you can explain what he has done. This is so out of order.
Trustee Handy.
I cannot believe this.
Trustee Handy. Thank you. We, we need to proceed. And, and I'm sorry, Brock Drezen, if you can follow up either in the chat or with the chancellor, that would be preferred. Thank you.
Treshika Bennett, Robert Crowley, and Fanley Warren are the next three individuals.
Robert Crowley, I don't see a Treshika anymore.
Okay, thank you. And then Fanley Warren and Maha Ibrahim.
Okay, you have Robert Crowley and Maha Ibrahim.
Thank you. Robert?
Hey, everybody. My name is Robert Crowley. I'm the head women's track coach at Laney College as well as a full-time kinesiology instructor. I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in allowing us to condition on campus this fall. We really appreciate the opportunity. This morning, our athletic department was surprised to find out that sport conditioning has been put on pause for the remainder of the semester and spring was, you know, we were surprised that, that everything was going to be paused on pause for the spring as well. We've been working together the last five months to create protocols in order to keep our student athletes safe going into our spring season. And currently, we have several tests, sports-specific protocols and systems in place to monitor our student athletes to make sure they're safe while doing something that keeps them inspired and motivated. This spring has been an important landmark for our student athletes because it's what they've been working towards since the shutdown in March. Putting athletic conditioning on pause has now created more confusion and difficulty and we're at a point where we don't know what to tell them.
10 seconds.
A lot of our athletes have to make decisions on what they'll do this spring. Many of them are going to make athletically motivated decisions to transfer schools, while others are going to make financial decisions to drop out and work to support their families while they're going through this difficult time.
Thank you, Robert. Please put the rest of your statement in the chat box so that we have it documented. Our next individuals are Fanley Warren, Maha Ibrahim, and Britt Renee.
I didn't see Fanley. Maha is in.
Thank you. My name is Maha Ibrahim and I am an education civil rights attorney at the gender equity nonprofit law firm Equal Rights Advocates in San Francisco. We want to thank trustee Weinstein for her dedication to and focus on gender equity issues throughout her tenure. Her tenure was paralleled by enormous regulatory attacks by Secretary DeVos's Education Department on Title IX and on our most vulnerable students. Trustee Weinstein made this a legacy issue, pushing Peralta toward CLERI Act compliance and transparency of mandatory CLERI reports with a focus on student accessibility to those reports. Because of her, Peralta was one of only five of our California community colleges that was sophisticated and awake enough to influence and sign on to the state chancellor's comments opposing the DeVos administration's survivor attacking new regulatory scheme for Title IX. We thank trustee Weinstein for her tenacity, her intelligence on civil rights issues, and we hope the wisdom and heart is present to carry on her work. Thank you so much, Karen, for what you've done for women and LGBTQI students and for all the work.
Thank you, Maha, for that. Britt Renee, Jeff Khan, Andrew Park.
As a student in my first semester in Laney College, living in Area 3, I was very excited to learn that this board terminated the sheriff's police contract and that Peralta's history as a progressive and revolutionary district is still relevant to this day. I am hopeful that my joy will not be dampened by any diversion from the current plan to hire a community-ready corps as they're lovingly known in the community, CRC, as the security contractor for my home campus. CRC is a part of our community. They are everywhere, providing security for local events, handing out groceries and gift cards, and always looking out for us. It is a big deal to me when I can feel safe and secure with cisgender heterosexual men around and I feel safe every time those men are around. Mr. Fisher can find another job, but as a 30-year-old working, full-time college student, I have nowhere else to go to pursue my education. I know in this economy, there is always a question of do we have enough, but the truth is, we prioritize what's important to us. And I assure you, the safety and security of marginalized students is priceless. Approve the contract with CRC. Approve the contract with CRC because we are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. We have Jeff Khan, Andrew Park, and Cheryl Lu.
Andrew Park.
Thank you, trustees and representatives. I just wanted to thank retiring trustee Karen Weinstein for her service and advocacy for our community. The past four years have been a time of many changes and I really appreciate how trustee Weinstein has provided the crucially necessary oversight and advocacy as an elected official in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Cheryl Lu, Mary Summers, and Kayana Harris. Not sure if you've already spoken, Kayana.
Cheryl Lu, I don't see anymore. Mary Lewis has just been updated.
And Mary Summers.
Don't see Mary Summers either.
Okay, let us go to Dimitri Belsa.
No Dimitri either.
Okay, Carolina Martinez already spoke earlier. Charles Bradford.
Charles Bradford's coming.
Thank you. And then we also have Maria Maria Pinia and Cassandra Upshaw. Yes, we can, Charles.
Hello. Good evening, trustees. My name is Charles Bradford. I am the staff assistant of the Laney College Welcome Center. I'm just calling in to voice my concerns about the safety of the campus as we do this, the transition from the police department to the security firm, which is a security firm that be. I'm, I'm calling to make sure that there won't be any gap between the time the police are gone and the security firm comes on. There are still my colleagues who work on the campus regularly. I myself, I know that it's can be very dangerous on campus. My car's been broken into three times. I've almost been assaulted by a neo-Nazi who was just walking by, coming through the campus. So I'm very concerned that, to make sure that there's gonna be a coverage of security. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Maria Margarita Pinia, Cassandra Upshaw, and Louis Goltz.
Just moved over. Cassandra's here, but the others I don't see.
Okay, and then maybe we can move her, move over Randy Heller, Alicia Caballero Christensen.
Alicia's been moved over. I don't see Randy.
Cassandra, are you in the room?
She's in the room. You're on mute if you're speaking.
Y'all want me to go?
Trustee Reese, should Alicia go?
All right, that'd be great. Thank you, Alicia.
Yeah, no problem. Hi, y'all. Buenas noches. In the middle of a global pandemic, trustee celebrations, Zoom fatigue, grading papers. Gracias a Dios. Thank you all so much. Thank God y'all are here. I'm sending you all love for just being here. So my name's Alicia Caballero Christensen. I'm a faculty of Ethnic Studies and Mexican Latin American Studies at Laney College. First, congratulations to the new trustees. I look forward to working with y'all. Shout out to Rea, our amazing student body president, for a phenomenal, "We heal us. It's modeling what our communities need to do as an alternative to police." I want to also continue to thank the board for terminating the Peralta's contract. I lost my brother who was killed by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. My good friend, her son was murdered by the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. So this is personal, this is political, this is important. Peralta has an opportunity to be a national, a global leader in modeling what true community campus safety looks like. We need to, you know, we need to follow the Black Minds Matter Holistic Safety Plan. We hear from the athletes. We need mental health counseling. We need programs to ensure to support our students.
Thank you, Alicia. Cassandra Upshaw, are you available now? And then we've got Ben Allen, Wendy Bloom, and Janet Stromberg. I, I believe that Cassandra just asked you to unmute her. If you were able to do that.
It's not allowing me to unmute. There she goes. She had muted herself. Okay.
Cassandra. I think you're unmuted.
Here is Cassandra.
Okay, maybe we should go on and try to come, loop back to her if we need to. So Ben Allen, Wendy Bloom, Janet Stromberg, but I believe Wendy and Janet are no longer here. Evelyn Lord. Ben Allen and Evelyn Lord.
Evelyn Lord's coming in.
Thank you.
They don't let us talk. I don't have access and when they finally, and I finally unmute myself, they mute me again.
This is Evelyn Lord. Is it my turn?
Yes, yes, Evelyn, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Evelyn Lord. I'm the head librarian at Laney College. I want to share with you some concerns that have come up at our library staff meeting. Over the last week, we've been meeting regularly to discuss the upcoming security plan. And I want to say first of all that the library is open. In regular, non-pandemic times, we are open in the evenings and we're also open to the public. And over the last few years, we've had a growing number of security issues in the library. And this is a concern for us because it affects the, the ability of our students to feel safe and secure in the library and to be able to focus on their studies. There is talk about defunding the police and I think that we are actually open toward exploring that. If we can move some of that funding toward other services that will support our students. But this plan, from what we're seeing, is But this plan, from what we're seeing, is not defunding police. It's actually defunding education. And this plan is going to cost more than the Peralta Police Contract. It involves a multitude of contractors. It will be, it's not.
Thank you, Evelyn. Please put the rest of your comments in the chat so that we have them and that they're documented and we can read them. Cassandra Upshaw, I believe that that was your voice earlier. Are you able to unmute and speak? Cassandra? Okay, our next three individuals are Eleni Gastis, Chris Widenbach, and Linda Thompson.
Okay, Chris and Eleni are coming in.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Eleni Gastis, the Journalism Department Chair at Laney College and the Senate President. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude to Karen Weinstein for her student-centered service during her time as a trustee. Karen didn't come to this seat with any preconceived notions, and she made time to listen and learn. She's staying her commitment to making Peralta a better place for all of us through listening and acting. Funny enough, I selected the same quote to read that she chose earlier. And for those of you who don't know, Karen is a bit of a Winston Churchill nerd, and I chose the same quote because it embodies her ethos. Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak. It's also what it takes to sit down and listen. Karen, the Laney College Journalism Department and the staff of the citizen, thank you for your support. I am thankful to know such a strong woman and honorable person. Your courage and compassion have made us better, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleni. Chris Widenbach and Linda Thompson.
Hi. A theme connects the concerns of student athletes, lab instructors, and those concerned about security planning. Top-down decisions are not collegial. Bringing people together is what makes the best decisions. Our district has an urgent need to convene the Health and Safety Committees, Facilities and Operations Managers, and classified professionals with the most experience working with safety situations and security agents over the past several years. Black Minds Matter Peralta has offered our voluntary assistance to help point the way to a holistic community safety and wellness fabric that would replace the previous security solution, which was based almost entirely on traditional policing. The community is ready for this, but we've got to be brought to the table to build the plan together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And then our last speaker for the evening is Linda Thompson.
I don't see a Linda Thompson.
Okay. Then I believe we have not missed anyone. That is all I have on my list. Yes. Madam President, we are at the end of our public conference.
Thank you for that. We will now move to item 2.13, the Chancellor's Report.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Madam Vice President, Board of Trustees, newly incoming trustees, welcome, and thank you so much, trustee Weinstein and trustee Brown for your service. Members of the community and colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to be with you here this evening, and thank you to all of our speakers. The evening is a little bit different than, you know, what we might experience. So tonight, for Chancellor's Reports, I want to go ahead and formally recognize our new appointees in the Chancellor's Cabinet, and that would be, and some of these were read out at the prior meeting, and so it was after the fact, and I wasn't able to bring this information forward for everyone. So first of all, I would like to welcome Atheria Smith as our Acting Vice Chancellor of General Services. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Design and Architecture from the University of California at Berkeley. And Ms. Smith has been with the district since 2004 and has served at different times as the Director of Facilities Planning and Development and as Facilities Planning and Development Manager. Prior to joining our district, she served in the Oakland Unified School District as Facilities Planning Manager. She has 20, more than 20 years of experience planning in a multi-campus and large urban school district, and we welcome her and really thank you, Acting Vice Chancellor Smith, for being willing to help us in this transition. I'd like to also welcome our newly appointed presidents, Dr. Nathaniel Jones. He is, excuse me, Dr. Nathaniel Jones III. He is the President of College of Alameda, and he began his first day here on December 4th. He has a Doctor of Philosophy from the University of Maryland at Baltimore with a focus in public policy, an MBA from Loyola University, and a Bachelor of Science from University of Maryland, again, at Baltimore with a major in mechanical engineering. You've read about him in the emails and the announcements and so forth, but I want you to know, he comes to us from Moreno Valley College, a college in the Riverside Community College District, where he's served as Vice President of Administrative Services, and he brings extensive knowledge of the community college system and financial management and experience with ACCJC and standards related to accreditation. Before that, he was with the University of California Riverside as CFO in the Humanities Arts and Social Sciences Division, and he has held the position of Associate Provost with Pepperdine University in Malibu, California. Ahead of moving into higher education leadership, Dr. Jones taught at Dartmouth College as an assistant professor within the Dartmouth Institute for Health Policy and Clinical Practice. He has published on the topics of incentives and professional responsibility within the healthcare, education, and finance areas. Dr. Rudy Besikov is President of Laney College, and that was effective on November 11th. He has a Doctor of Education, Education Leadership from UCLA. He received the Outstanding Dissertation Award for his dissertation, quote, "The Role of the Community College President in Fundraising: A Best-Practice Study." He has a Master of Arts in Applied, excuse me, in English and Applied Linguistics from the University of Colorado at Denver, and he has a Bachelor of Arts in English and French from the University of Colorado Boulder. Dr. Besikov has been with Peralta since 2018 as the Vice President of Instruction at Laney College, and then stepping in to serve as interim president. Previously, he worked within the California Community College System. His tenure dates back to 2004, first as a professor of English at Long Beach City College, and then moving into higher education leadership within the Community College District System, which included vice presidency roles at Los Angeles Valley College, Mount San Jacinto College, and Dr. Besikov has published and spoken on topics of community college fundraising across his career. Last, tonight, I would like to also welcome Dr. Ronald McKinley as our Acting Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. Dr. McKinley has been working with our district as the Acting Vice Chancellor of Human Resources recently, and he brings extensive experience as a Chief Human Resource Officer in Human Resource Management and Leadership within complex organizations, as well as an academic background. He meets, excuse me, he holds a PhD in Administration and Management with emphasis on organizational development from Walden University in Minneapolis, and an MBA in Human Resource Management from the Keller Graduate School of Management in Chicago, and a Bachelor of Management from Upper Iowa University in Fayetteville, Iowa. He is also a lifetime, has a lifetime certification as a Senior Professional in Human Resource Management. And so we're looking forward to including him on our leadership team. So, welcome to you all. Thank you so much for being a part of our team, and we are really, really excited to have you. And at another meeting, perhaps, when we're not pressed, we'll have an opportunity for you to share some thoughts. With that, our next presentation is from our partner, the Association of Governing Boards. Maisha, I just want to make sure that we still have our individual from AGB with us.
Yes, we do. And she's, she's just put her camera on. She's ready.
Okay, very good. So, Maureen, I would like to turn it over to you. Does she have the ability to share a screen, or do I need to do that?
She does, but I'm ready if she would like me to. She wanted to do a demo. How are you feeling, Maureen? What do you want to do?
Yeah, I can start with the presentation, and then I'll do the live demo. So, thank you all. Maureen, I'm from the Association of Governing Boards of Universities and Colleges, and I, you're a member engagement manager, so I'm here to walk you throughout your membership journey. So, next slide, please. So, I would like to, the objective of this presentation is want to learn more about you and your concerns and how we can help you throughout these challenges that you're facing, and how we can work together to accomplish your strategic goals. And so, this is a partnership, and as the Association of Governing Boards, we're here to help you govern with confidence. And the next slide, please. So, I would like to hear from you. I've heard a bit of what the concerns are, but is there, like, top three that you would like to get information from AGB concerning three particular topics?
Hi, Maureen. How are you? This is Julina Bonilla. I think we met on, with the orientation that we did with the board officers.
Yes.
And so, I think for, and I'll just kind of lead this, and if the trustees have, would like to chime in, that would be great. But I think for us, right now, we have AGB, which will likely be, board officers will be working in partnership with on the new permanent chancellor search. And that's a very interactive process that is led by the board officers, and usually creating some sort of ad hoc committee that includes at least three trustees that will be working with you to finalize the search timeline.
Excuse me, trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
President Bonilla, there are two separate items here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're actually talking about the enrollment and some of the services that are offered by trustee training.
Right. So I would.
Sorry, sorry. I have AGB Chancellor Search in my, in my head right now. So I'll, I'll go ahead and defer to some of the other trustees who may want more information about AGB.
I think it might be instrumental, Maureen, if you would just give an overview of AGB. Provide information about what AGB offers to trustees, maybe show how trustees can access the materials and log in on the website, give them some examples of the kinds of ways in which they can interact with AGB, and keep it very broad, rather than asking for a lot of dialogue right now.
Okay.
Navy Chancellor.
So, if we, I'll, if we just skip to the next slide, and then I'll do a live demo. Okay. So, basically, we launched a new website in January, which comes with a slew of new benefits that are member-exclusive. So, that includes the Knowledge Center, some frequently asked questions, as well as some orientation materials. So, the key to unlocking these benefits is login in. So, I'm going to share my screen and show you how you can access these materials. So, on the upper right-hand corner, where it says login, that's what you want to click on.
We're not seeing, we're not seeing your screen right now?
Oh, not yet. Let me see.
Not yet.
Just a moment. How about now?
Yes, we see that.
Okay. So, in the upper right-hand corner, where it says login, you want to click on that, and it will take you to a page that will ask you for your login credentials. The username is your email address, and that is true for everyone that is on the roster, and your default password is, in capital letters, bookmark AGB. So, that will unlock your benefits, and I will go over what those are briefly. So, the Knowledge Center has a wealth of information, and this, you can find topics that are front of mind, as I heard this evening. So, for instance, you can find resources on coronavirus, justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, student success, as well as student well-being. You can also find information on board fundamentals, information by institution type, roles and responsibilities, key committees, and resources by format. So, I'll start off with the resources by format, which is, so that includes the Trustee Ship magazine. This is our bi-monthly magazine, and you should be receiving a copy if we have your mailing address on file. You can also access digital versions of this magazine, starting with the January, February issue of this year. So, you can view the latest issue, which is the November, December issue. The visual format reads like the hard copy. It has the same layout. You can search within the document. It has a lot of good articles in there. So, definitely, this is a good way to go if you don't want to pile up the hard copy. But we do also have archived versions leading back to 2011. They're not in the digital format, but for instance, if you go into an older issue, it will have just a quick summary, and then the article title, and once you click on that, it will give you the article. It can also be, it is printer-friendly, so if you find, if you're looking for a particular article and you find it, you can save it as a PDF, or you can print it. So, that is there for your use.
Maureen, maybe it might be also instrumental if you would cover the one-page benefits, so that the trustees can see, just at a glance, what their benefits are, and we, we will, you know, make sure that they have the information they need for the login and so forth.
Okay. So, let me, I could do it from this screen. There is a one-pager. Maisha, if you have it as well, but this has.
It was uploaded, everyone.
Okay. So, this is the same information. So, you get entire access to the Knowledge Center as a member. You also get a copy of a print version of the magazine, and also digital access. You get full access to our electronic books, complimentary with your membership, but you also get member-preferred pricing with the print version. You get full access to our public policy reports and statements, our governance briefings, our frequently asked questions, the digital membership badge that you can use on your email or LinkedIn, if you will. You get member-preferred pricing on all of our events, starting with, you know, the Foundation Leadership Forum, the Board Professionals Conference, and our flagship meeting, which is the National Conference on Trustee Ship. And then our institutes, which is geared towards fostering a working relationship with the president and the board chair. You get access to our webinars that have. That have, you know, relevant topics that are, you know, top of mind for a lot of institutions. And foundations at this time, and that is complimentary with your membership. You also get the new board member orientation, which is uh. Orientation pool for new board members or trustees, whichever term you use. But it can also act as a refresher for um, existing board members. So, it is self-paced, you can start and stop at your leisure. And it will save your progress from where you left off. And you can come back to it at whatever time. The one for public institutions, I believe, is about two hours long. Um, so, I definitely encourage you to take a look at that. You also have peer-to-peer conversations where you can come and ask questions. Um, related to a particular topic, and we merely act as facilitators for that. Um, for the public and policy side, you get full access to all of our public policy alerts. And then for consulting, um, this is a member-exclusive benefit. Any consultation that comes out of it, it, there is uh, member-preferred pricing for it. Or additional fees that would apply. You also have access to A G B search. I believe you're doing a search right now. Um, you do get member-preferred pricing with that. And also a virtual board meeting platform, A G B onboard, if that's something you'd be interested in doing. Um, or using. It helps you communicate with your board, it can ask, act as a depository for. Your meeting materials, your minutes, and so on and so forth. Um. And you also have access to your, our concert services here at the bottom right-hand corner. With, where the purple um, box that says A G B Concerts, you can find. Um, someone in real time answering your questions. If you're not able to log in, for instance, or you need help. Finding a particular article or publication, we'd be more than happy to help you with that. And then we also have a governance needs review, uh, which comes complimentary with your membership. And that is, uh, it's basically a wellness check to see what keeps your board up at night. Uh, and someone from your team can contact, there's a form you would fill out, and someone would contact you with next steps. And you also have Ask the Expert sessions. Um, this is from our consulting arm, and. Basically, it's one-hour Zoom meetings where you can come in and ask questions in real time. On specific topic areas. So, you, we have a consultant who would speak. At that session, so for instance, if you were interested tomorrow in attending. The Presidential Leadership Development and Assessment uh version, you could show up at one o'clock. Um, and. Ockso consultant at that time. Unlike the webinars, these are not recorded. So, you actually would have to be in attendance for those.
Maureen, so, um, uh, because we've had a pretty long evening, this evening, uh, I'm going to. See if uh, there might be a conclusion you might bring to this, and then um, turn it back to. Uh, to see if there are any questions.
So, um, let me see here, if I go back. I mean, I, so, in the presentation that was shared with you all. There is a couple of links to good resources that might help you. As you're thinking about decision-making as the months come by. So, I encourage you to take a look at some of these. Uh, there's a mixture of um publications and webinars. Um, if you click on the links, they are live, so I encourage you to take a look. Um, as I heard today, you know, student well-being, student success, that's. A big deal right now, so there's some resources on that, some resources on committees. Um, so, I encourage you to take a look at your own time, but it. If you have questions for me, I'd be willing to take those at this time.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, and, and Chancellor, I don't think they, that we have questions at this time.
Okay, very good.
But thank you.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for your patience, uh, this evening.
You're welcome. Take care.
I think there is a question from trustee Whitrow.
Uh, I've lost my um, my co-hosting, so if I can, if I can be. I had to log off, so if I can have the co-hosting ability, I can manage this a little better.
I, I have a quick question, if I could.
Yes.
This is a great background, and um, I see that you've been around since nineteen twenty-one. How many um. Community colleges do you have that you work with, these to be the four-year universities and four-year colleges?
So, off the top of my head, I'm not sure how many community colleges, but we have. So, we have the institutions as members, and there's about two thousand. Of those institutions and foundations, which then. Grants individual membership, and there's about forty thousand individual memberships, and those are board of. Trustees like yourself, or board members like yourself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Handy?
Yeah, I am trying to understand. Um, thank you for your presentation, but I am just trying to understand where this is coming from. It seems in the presentation, this is targeted towards the trustees. I see that there's things for the presidents and other leadership. But we have two. Associations. We have the California Community College League, and we have A C C T. And I am struggling to find what is different because of the leadership, the training. And things that we have, and, and the, the part that is just really puzzling to me is that. This is the first I'm hearing about this, so I'm, I don't understand where this is coming from. Um, what this association is, I, I'm sorry, and you're kind of put on the spot, but uh, this is the second. Or third time I've been blindsided tonight by not having the information beforehand. I, I'm just not understanding, um. What the value added of a third organization. Um, and it seems to be, um, not, I mean, California Community College is specific. I know there are colleges across the country, but we are all very, very different, especially California. Trustees here are elected in California, they're appointed in other states. Our issues and things are not, are not all the same. It's not a one-size-fits-all. That's why it's important to have the California Community College Association. But then we have the American Association of Community College Trustees. So, I'm trying to understand what the value added of this piece i- is. Are you providing training? Um, are you coming in, or is this just access to information? That's online somewhere. I really, I'm sorry, this, I'm, I'm not understanding this at all, and. Since I've been a trustee for eighteen years, and I've not heard of this organization, you can see why I am a little um perplexed. I mean, but if, if there's something here that I'm missing, or wasn't given, I would really like to understand what this is all about. And what the value added is for us.
So, let me interject here, if you don't mind. Uh, trustee Bonia, um, excuse me, President Bonia. Would you like to offer any comments for uh trustee Handy?
Uh, no, I was actually going to defer to you, Chancellor.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, so.
I mean, I've gone through, I've gone through uh, an orientation. But you, but Chancellor, I think what trustee Handy is asking for is kind of a, a much more global perspective.
Right, so, um, just for the, for the edification of everyone. A G B is a resource similar to the two organizations that you mentioned, trustee Handy. The, the reason that we bring A G B in is just offering our trustees another. Um, location for information and for. Uh, ways to avail themselves of different types of materials. Second, as part of the contract that brought me in as the interim chancellor. A G B was one of the um, pieces of that, of that agreement, so. The uh, Peralta Community College District joined A G B. And we are availing ourselves of the best practices that they bring forward. Doesn't mean that you have to. Avail yourself of them if you're not interested, or if it's not something that you feel that's uh beneficial to you. But it does provide a plethora of resources for our district and for our colleges, so. There's, there is, uh, it, you know, think of it as. You have, you know, three different places you can go to get specific information. Regarding particular issues that higher education, including community colleges are facing. So, there are webinars, there's uh, you know, a compliment, not free, but, you know, materials that you can download. And I find it to be very helpful in, in helping to get different perspectives, perhaps. Or just to find ways, new ideas of how to do, do the business that we have to do in uh, community colleges. So, you are correct, they are not a California-located company. They are nationwide. They have a, a, a handful of different types of organizations, including foundations. Uh, and, and they, they have um, deep and uh, wide, I, I would say. Expertise in many areas that we're facing, so it's just a piece of information. It isn't anything that you necessarily need to. Um, you know, take in and say, we, we have to do this, but this is a set of resources that. Uh, is available to the trustees, so that's an overview.
Okay, and, and I, I wanted to ask you something, Chancellor, so this is something that's also, also available to the college presidents. And, and so it's not limited to trustees, it is for the entire.
Correct.
Ma- because it makes more sense for them, but not for us. But, um, that's what, that's what I'm trying to understand, um, um, where this is coming from, because, um. We're trustees, we're not, we're not there the everyday, our, ours is fiduciary, it's.
But there's.
Our job is not as extensive as yours.
There's both, there's trustee level and CEO level.
Okay, well, that makes more sense to me.
It's, 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 it's just, I don't know, go to a restaurant and get to choose different things, so. Um, this is.
And, and Chancellor, did I hear, um, and, and, and thank you for reminding us, you were also working through A G B. Um, as part of your coaching.
Correct.
Component, which is part of your contractual agreement um, with the trustees. So, yeah, there is a number of services that are offered, and I think you were just highlighting that. I am so sorry, in addition to. Um, the uh, national search uh, services that they offer as well. So, there just seems that a number of services like A C C T um, offers. Um, i- it kind of a broader spectrum, so thank you for that. But I do have trustee Brown in the queue.
Thanks, I was just, uh, I appreciate the clarification. I was just trying to um. Understand a little bit more about A G B, and so as I understand it, it is a coach, it, so our chancellor is being coached. Uh, as an executive through A G B. And is this, um, so I'm, I'm wondering, is, are the programs similar to those. That are provided by, say, the um, University of California Davis Wheelhouse Institute? Or those programs that are provided through C C L C or A C C T? And I'm wondering if A G B is, um, does that have. Trainings that are focused on California initiatives and California regulations?
Um, A G B is more of a nationwide organization, so the idea is, for example, when we're talking about. Um, different aspects of leadership and organizational behavior, or trustees, or. Uh, CEO functioning, that sort of thing. Um, the topics are very um, germane. So, for example, you can go to A G B and, and engage in a. A webinar or a seminar, if you will, on topics such as. Real estate and asset manage- management within your, your um, your organization. And while you are correct in that California has a specific lens for community colleges. A G B still offers a lot of uh. Resources that allow you to uh garner new ideas, ways of looking at things, uh, resources. Ways to connect, how to get information, and so forth. And so, yes, uh, the coaching is part of the contract that was signed by myself. And the board, because it was required as part of my agreement. Um, so. I find their courses and, and their information to be edifying. I would not say that they are a certification or certified institution, say, for example. At Davis or some other location where you can get a degree or something of that nature. So, and I'm not sure if that, if that's a, something that's available. With A C C T, or, or I, I heard you talk about that earlier, about some of the certifications, but I'm not sure. If they're apples to apples, so.
And what's the cost? What's the A G B cost?
Um, I don't have that figure on the top of my head, I'll have to get it for you.
It's based on your full-time enrollment, so, um, it, it varies. From institution to institution.
Uh, what was the Peralta contract cost?
May I get your pardon?
The Peralta contract cost.
I'll have to get that information for you, trustee Brown, and bring it back.
Yeah, I, I think that's very important, because we um, had to limit. Our um, involvement in some of the other um, organizations. Simply because of, of the cost, and for many years, we um, did not. Uh, we were not members of A C C T because of the outrageous cost. It is the most expensive. Um, it's productive, but it's, it's, it's expensive. We also have membership costs to C C L C. And then on top of that, we pay for the conferences and all of that, and um, I don't think, as trustees. And our budget, we can't afford to attend any other association, because we have a limited budget. We, many years ago, we moved to have our personal development budget. Um, separated from our um trustee um involvement in these organizations. Because we had to add more money to the, to the budget in order to be able to um. Be members in those organizations, so the cost, the cost and the commitment and. Any additional things is something that we really need to know about, because, as I said, to keep costs down. We have literally, over the years, had to limit our, our engagement, so I would like to have. That report become, um, be forthcoming.
Okay, I can bring forward, um, the relative.
Can I suggest that we've spent enough time on this item and that we could move along?
Thank you, sure.
Um, just because it may be boring to you, trustee Gonzalez, I don't think that we needed to move it. I think this is a very important issue. We have had many important issues come up on this agenda tonight that we were not informed of. That is my job as a trustee. It is fiduciary. It's the cost. Losing students.
Can I inform board, uh, and for.
So, I um, will redirect us back to our agenda. Chancellor, would you like to move forward?
I would, I would like to thank Maureen uh, for her patience and for being here this evening. Um, I really do appreciate A G B and the services that they offer. Uh, and so, thank you so much, Maureen. I would like to now move on to our um. Marketing Communications Plan, and I have asked uh, our Executive Director of Marketing Communications. And Public Information.
So, Chancellor, in, in light of. So Chancellor, in in light of the time
Yep.
I'll I'll We'll take it as an informational item, it is uploaded for the trustees to review.
Okay.
Uh, and then if 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 you're planning to bring this back um as a formal presentation, we can do that at a later time.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Um, trustee Brown, I do see your hand raised in the in the queue.
Oh, it's not, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Uh Chancellor, moving forward.
Uh, we have uh item three point one, which is the Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report.
Um, so item three point one, uh, three point two and three point three are all informational items. Do you, would you like to set a context for three point one on the Oversight Committee Annual Report? Is there a particular presenter?
Um, we have Andrea Dawson, who's the chair of the Bond Measures Oversight Committee here, uh, and Acting Vice Chancellor, Atheria Smith. Again, these are informational items and the trustees uh may, if 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 you so choose, uh, take a take time to read through them, there is no action required here, it's just uh to provide information.
Um, thank you. So we'll go ahead and take the Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report, I did read through it, I don't know if trustees have any questions. There is a series of recommendations at the end of the report. Um, and I would ask that the that the recommendations be reviewed by you Chancellor and your administration. Some of them are aligned with, um, oh, let me see. I'm just gonna give you a quick example. Some of the recommendations, for instance, um, are aligned with uh the website accessing links. Um, there's a reference to project labor agreement um and to pre-apprenticeship programs. Those are um components that um internally administration should either be working on or have updates about. And so the alignment of these recommendations with what has already um what is already in place and moving forward within the district um should be uh should be coordinated um as these recommendations come back to us um or as as these recommendations move forward. Uh, I don't know if trustees have any other additions that they want to make uh or comments about the um about the annual report from the bond oversight. Let's see if I can see trustees.
Or president?
Yes.
If I may, if if the presentation from Andrea Dawson for the Citizens Oversight Committee is not very long, I think it might be important to just have a quick update, because we we should have these updates from the C O C um.
And and I and I agree, so if we can keep this to um a minimal, that would be great. Um, Ms. Dawson?
Hi, good evening, um trustees and Chancellor. Um, I've listened to most of your meeting, um, it's been very informative and I welcome the two new board members and um and I'm sorry to see the um previous ones um leaving, but um in particular, I want to mention that um Kevin Jenkins um was part of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee until um his um be now being um elected a trustee. So um, as you s- all have said that you read the report, so the purpose of the report is to inform the taxpayers on the bond measures for um Peralta Community College. And that would be bond measures A and G. And um it's the two thousand and six measure A and the two thousand and eighteen measure G. So and to ensure that you are in compliance with the project list and the spending um as was indicated in the bond measure. And so um I won't go into great detail if you all have read the report, but I will say that I um that our committee met um four times, and then we had a subcommittee um that met to write this report, because there was um some conversation and not a u- unanimous in um agreeing to what should be in this report. And one of the things that kept coming up was that there were several years where there was no um report written to the taxpayers. And that is stated in this report and the reasons why we um did our best to acknowledge why that happened. And I will say that I um spoke with the previous um chair of the Bond Oversight Committee and also with the current chair, um Deborah Weintraub of the Parcel Tax Committee. And um we determined a- as a whole committee that it wasn't in our purview to look back and make any determination why those reports weren't written, that it since we were not the sitting committee. So I what I am happy to report, though, is that um the staff worked very collaboratively with us and provided all the information that we asked for us to review, what has happened thus far on the new bond measure, um, the two thousand and eighteen measure G and the reporting on measure A. And um so the one thing that our we need to do every year is determine from the information that we were given, if the district is in compliance with the um right, the state regulation that is stated through uh ed code one five two seven eight through one five two eight oh. And I am happy to report on page um I I think if page four of this report, um, we make a statement that oh, we we say that the district is in compliance. So um, and I'm also happy that to report that I see that um there's some accommodation already of interest in um taking some of our recommendations and that, one of them in particular being um the um updating the website and working more on the website, so it has a link to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and all the reports that are re- related to our committee, so it can be easily found for any of the taxpayers that are interested. So, and I will leave it at that, because it's getting late.
Um, Ms. Dawson, I want to thank you um for one, being concise, and for two, presenting the report. Um, I read through the report, I was very pleased to see the report and equally as pleased to see the recommendations. Um, and this is kind of the charge to the administration um who was overseeing um the the bond program, is to ensure that they are closely reading the recommendations put forward and making sure that there is any course correction that needs to take place, and that it happens expeditiously and with a response. So I'm looking forward to seeing a response actually from the administration um on on these particular recommendations that you put forward, so thank you.
Thank you. So and we will be asking for uh any progress on these at our January meeting, so we'll track them through next year. But I think it's important that we continue to have good collaboration with the district um facilities chief, um Aretha, um and um with Mark Johnson, who has been our liaison. So because um, you know, it's important for the district to stay in compliance. If not, um i- it's um not a good thing to present to the taxpayers where.
Thank you, thank you, Maureen, we appreciate your time um and commitment for uh doing this public service of of oversight on our tax dollars. Um, and if there are there any other comments from trustees?
Yeah, yes, I'm I'm a little, I'm not sure if we can answer it tonight, or maybe it's a question that we can mull on, and then you can come back to us. Um, Ms. Dawson, but I am concerned about the couple of years where we don't have the information um in terms of uh the expenditures and 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 such, and that's something that we've been asking about for a while. So again, I'm not sure if tonight's going to be the night to talk about that, but if there it is that the end of it, or will there be m- more that is going to happen on that end?
Uh, well, let me explain, you you actually, you you did get audit reports. And the audit report showed that you were in i- were in compliance for the most part. You did, um, they did address several um conditions in the previous year's audits, and they actually continued through um the most current audit that was presented to us. Um, but they're not conditions that are severe enough to say that the district was out of compliance with spending the the bond dollars as the voters intended. So um, in in going back, I I I know that there was one um person in particular on our committee um who's represents Alameda County Taxpayers Association that was very concerned that we actually didn't go back and ask for reports and um a deep dive into the past. And what I um understood from the previous chair, um Michael Mills, was that the concern was over the parcel tax, the concern was not whether the bond dollars were not spent in accordance with what was listed in the bond language for two thousand and six, that was not the question. So, and I also had that reiterated from Deborah Weintraub, that their concern was not so much about, well, it wasn't about the bond measure, it was about the parcel tax. So I don't know quite how our committee and or the the district at this point would necessarily benefit from that. I think that what's important is that last year's um presentations and um charges for spending, that we track those and that those are followed through through the next year, and there's not any great deviations in scope or changes to projects, because this is what um happens that gets districts in trouble.
Great, that's reassuring, um, because obviously what we want to do is we don't want to be so far out of compliance um that it's still compliant, want to be in the zone where we are fully compliant and things are going well. And it sounds like you all are making sure that we are on that path and we remain on that path. We look forward to your next update, because your work is incredibly important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you, um, I have a question and then just a a quick statement, the the question is um, well, first of all, thank you very much for your work and the work of the committee. Um, it it's um incredium incredibly important to us as board to have the help of peers who are citizens uh helping us oversee the district. And so the report's really helpful, I want to reiterate trustee Bonilla's um concern that the administration paid close attention to the recommendations and then come back and resolve those, so thank you. Um, the question that I have actually has to do with who authored, who are the principal authors um of of the report, was this written by the members of the task force itself, was this a staff authored document? If you could help me understand that.
Yes, um, I wrote the report in collaboration with Kevin Jenkins and Marcus Crowley. I took the lead on it, because I have been um on Oakland Unified School District's bond oversight. I'm actually the chair of that committee for um the last, well, I haven't been the chair for the last six years, but I've been the chair for the last two and a half years. And off, I have been often on that committee for twelve years now. And so, and I actually work as a senior manager in the San Francisco Unified School District Bond Program. So I I'm quite familiar with what I believe that these the spending plans should look like and how to track them and how to keep ourselves honest. So with for the taxpayers. So I authored this, because in many districts, I as I've found out through the years, um, it's given to staff to do the authoring, and then basically, frankly, it ends up being a um more a sometimes a public relations document for a a a district. And that's not the intention of this this document. The intention is to find the district either in compliance and make and if there was some shortcomings that could make you come to better best practices, as I call it, then make those recommendations. And to me, that's what our charge is, it is not to be a P R a piece for uh any district. Um, and to work in conjunction with the district to come up with that report to the taxpayers and then lead them to the district websites that does showcase the good work of the district. And if you actually look through this port report, there are links to the build Peralta website. So if someone's really interested in seeing what all the projects are, they would automatically link to that. And next year, I think the plan is to do a little bit more of that, but you know, this was our first year at this, and we actually came on board late. So given the way it all worked out.
One other just quick question, thank you. Was was the staff offered an opportunity to review the report and and provide feedback to the committee on the report in terms of what they what they're doing and and what parts they thought were accurate, or what their part parts they thought perhaps uh they they agreed with?
Um, y- yes, I would say yes, I um that
Thank you.
This this came as a draft before the staff and our committee. And um, and so it for accuracy, I that was it, that's very important to us.
Good, I look forward to the Chancellor's follow-up, thank you very much for your work, and thank you to the staff who assist in in general services. It's it must be overwhelming right now, trying to with the instability, the pandemic and the tasks at hand. Uh, n- nobody's sitting around on their hands doing nothing, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee um Gonzalez, and I do have trustee uh with, um, I'm sorry, trustee Brown in the queue.
Thank you, uh, President Bonilla, and thank you, uh, Ms. Dawson the uh committee for the work, I appreciate that um that work, it's really important. I know that the items that are reported on are
We lost you.
Trustee Brown, we lost you. Um, let's let's give her a moment to come back if she comes back, are there any other questions um and that we can do some follow-up? Um, Ms. Dawson, are you gonna stay with us for a few more minutes?
Yeah, oh, sure.
Just in case, just in case trustee Brown comes back. Um, with that, uh, chance, I'd like to go ahead and move us um the the next informational item, and trustee Brown, if you come back and you can hear me, um, please, please just interrupt me.
Hey, great, thank you, um, we will be on item three point three, excuse me, three point two. And this is just an update to the trustees regarding the um California Trustee Fellowship Intercession Project, uh, which is um part of the uh commu- California Community College District trustee uh program through Aspen Institute. Uh, they're offering a fellowship for institutions like ours to um take on an intercession project. Uh, and one of the, one of the areas would be in the realm of uh D E I in terms of looking at our E E O plan and revising it uh to connect with the call to action. So uh, it's a focus project, you can see here the information that uh is in the in the item. It allows us to uh, i- i- if we if we are successful, we will receive a grant of fifty thousand dollars to help us with this work. It's a very, very prescribed with timelines and so forth. Uh, so I just wanted to, part of the, part of the requirement of the application is that we bring it forward to the trustees uh to let them, let you all know about it, get feedback, uh, if there is If there isn't any feedback, and then we will be notified in, in a few days of whether we were successful or not. Trustee Withrow and I were on a, I believe, I believe trustee Reese was also on this webinar where we were talking about this opportunity. So it's, it's merely an informational item for the board to consider and to think about how we can work with the Aspen Institute to help move us forward in our DEI efforts in particular with recruiting in the EEO plan.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Trustee Withrow, would you like to offer some words about this?
I think it, it's a very important step. The four programs that we've had in conjunction with the Aspen Institute and the California Community College Foundation, as well as the state chancellor, have been very focused. They're, we have, they look at it with a big picture and then they pull together things that are limited in geographical scope. So if we have, I think it was 11 or 12 different districts. When we'd have breakouts, we'd get it down, in our case, in the East Bay. And they'd have statistics and data that were very meaningful to the environmental set that we were working with. And I think it's a great move. I think it's a great move. And I appreciate the fact that our chancellor has taken the initiative to get us aboard.
That's great. Thank you, trustee Withrow. Any other comments? Thank you, chancellor.
Hey, thank you. The last item that we have for information is item 3.3. And in this item, it is bringing to the attention of the board and the community, in the community that we are on track to move with the recommendation provided to us through the state chancellor's office at their meeting in September, saying that we, the Peralta governing board should complete the search and employ a permanent chancellor by March 1, 2021. And we are looking to engage AGB as a international, sorry, as a national search organization to move us through this process. You may recall that there are a number of items that we are to complete by the end of this year. And in the end of this year, providing a letter to the state chancellor's office governing board, letting them know of the progress that we've made on these items. And they include the completion or the adequate response to the November 1 ACCJC letter report, which we call the special reports. Ensuring that we have moved forward with hiring a chance, interim chancellor by October 1st, and we've done that. And so this is one of those items to move forward with. There has been some concern or some ideas raised about the timing of completing the search being March with the arguments around not having a very robust pool because of the time of the year and so on. But nevertheless, we're going to, you know, make our best effort to, to get the search completed. So.
Thank you. And if I can add just a little more context on this. So as the trustees are very familiar with the search process, at our next meeting in closed session, we will likely, I'm sorry, at our next meeting in open session, we will likely identify as we've done before, the desire of the board to create an ad hoc committee that would serve as the point of contact for the search firm and work directly with the search firm to develop a timeline. And, and some other content issues relative to, very similar to what we did in the interim chancellor search. So again, this would be the board officers and likely one other trustee who will work directly with the search firm. And of course, with our acting by chancellor of HR.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Work with the search firm in, in what way? This doesn't seem like past practices.
In the ways that we have always in the past, the search firm is in direct contact with the board because this is the board's search. It's not the chancellor's search.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and how will the search firm be identified? That's something that usually comes before the board. Firms, especially on, on something this important, there's actually, we have had all the people who wanted to bid for it to actually come before the board and
And that's exactly what will happen. You'll see, you will see two or three search firms that were vetted. And then they will, that will, that information will be brought forward to you. Same process.
Okay. And when will that happen?
It should likely happen at our next board meeting.
I'm really distressed that we are putting a lot of things on the next board meeting, which is next week, which was not a meeting that was scheduled. And I am not available to be there. And I don't know about other people. We were not asked. We have, this is not how we operate. We
See, Andy, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. This schedule was done last year at the beginning of the year. Unfortunately, when it was made, it did not take into consideration that we needed to have our first board meeting after the second Friday in December.
Exactly. I understand. That was something that somehow got missed by legal counsel. It's a new process. But, but nonetheless, moving those issues from this board meeting, which was scheduled to now having a full board meeting next Tuesday. It is the end of year. We traditionally do not come back convene until mid-January. My schedule was set a year ago. My, every day is full. I made accommodations for three things this week and then the last minute, they were all canceled. So these are some very important decisions that we're not all going to be able to weigh in on. And I feel like we're shoving a lot of things into an unplanned meeting at the end of the year that may should be at the next meeting, which was, which is a scheduled meeting. I, it's not, I don't, I don't care for not having my voice in these decisions. That's what I'm here for. And I really concerned about how things have been changed around and all of these things that we're trying to squeeze in at the end of the year.
You're, you're absolutely right, trustee Handy. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you. To add, out of my, out of, it really is out of our control. But I, but I hear you and I will make a promise to the board that I will reconvene with the chancellor and try to streamline our next board meeting because we will have two brand new trustees sitting in that board meeting. And then we're also doing our reorg for the board officers. So we, we do have quite a bit. We had hoped to bifurcate some of the issues, which is why we did the ceremony and some of these other issues today. So we should have a much lighter agenda for, for Monday. But yes, that there's, there's going to be
You're saying Monday?
Chancellor or, or, yes, it's Monday, right?
It is Monday, Monday.
Monday.
Yes.
And that's because the retreat is happening on Tuesday and Wednesday. So we have back to back meetings, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And y'all remember, I have a full-time job, right? Right. As do, as does everyone else who are on my little squares here. I'm so, as does everyone else. So we will, we will do the best that we can given the short notice and the change to the schedule, trustee Handy. And I, and I make that commitment to you. I don't know what else to do at this point.
Yeah, damage is already done.
Yeah. So, so thank you for that, chancellor. We are going to have to bring back the, this particular item. The trustees do need to have a overview of the various firms that were looked at. And I know that there was more than one. And then there is a very, there is a search timeline that is usually presented at the same time. And we have one that they're very familiar with because we just used it. That was pulled together by our previous search firm who cannot, who has told me that they could not provide this service for us moving forward. With that, trustees, I would like to move us forward. It is very late. We are on item 4.1 for Board of Trustees Reports. And I'll make the rounds, trustee. Is trustee Brown with us?
Yes.
Just got back and I was, I missed something. We're not gonna have the, the report on the, well, so we just had the bond oversight committee report, but we had another report. Are we not doing that?
The other report, we, we just had, I'm sorry, trustee Brown, what, what report are you referring to?
Well, I thought that we were gonna get a report, a more in-depth report on our bond program. No?
We did.
We did.
Okay. And that, but that was from the bond oversight committee, not from the ongoing projects.
Right, right. From the, from the board, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So thank you, Peralta community, for allowing me to have the opportunity to contribute to education for eight years. We passed the bond. We had, we hired brilliant presidents. We, they moved on like shooting stars to new places. Welcome to the new precedents that we have. Education is important. I've said several times that it has been the legacy of liberation for people who have come to this country, either enslaved or in meager circumstances. And that is something that trustee Weinstein spoke to as well, when she talked about her remembrances of growing up and going to college. No matter what culture, background, ethnicity you come from, education is a liberator. It's, I think we have to really focus on the way that we impact and touch the families around us. The students were speaking today and some of them, it's the first time they've been to a board meeting. And we really want to make sure that whatever is done is contemplated carefully when it affects people on that journey towards self-determination. So I would say in closing that the struggle continues. And it's incredibly important that students are always first and that all of, and that the budget and all actions reflect that and manifest that. And there is no substitute for that action and for that intention and follow through. So a lot, there's gonna be continuously difficult things to pass through regardless of what the perspective or vision is. There has to be that focus. Or the different political perspective of where we are now at Peralta. We are still a public education institution that is supported by taxpayers for the benefit of our students. And that really has to manifest itself in our actions. So I wish everyone the best of luck in leading Peralta in that direction and with that commitment.
Thank you for that, trustee Brown. Trustee Weinstein.
I, I simply want to thank everybody and thank you for my opportunity to be a Peralta trustee. I do, my heart was broken tonight for the student athletes. And, and, and hope that they're understand about COVID, but hope there is some other way to deal with what's going on. Because clearly many of those students get scholarships through athletics and we need to really pay attention to that. But that's for you all to work on. And again, as I said earlier on, I think if we stay focused on students, the board will do incredibly well and we will do better because it is the students that we are accountable to and the community members. And I hope that the board has good luck with that. I wish good luck to the new trustees and I just want to thank everybody and say I love you all and good night.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein.
You're welcome.
Trustee Withrow.
I'm Meredith and Karen. Thank you so much for being great colleagues and associates. You've brought over the course of either four years or eight years, a great deal of time, energy and intellect to the board. And I've very much appreciated it. I have to say that trustee Brown will be shifting to Meredith Brown, community member on the retirement board. She's agreed to stay on that board, which I obviously sincerely appreciate. So bidding you adieu and welcoming aboard our two new colleagues that will show up with three meetings back to back. But again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you. First, I want to say a fond farewell to our two departing colleagues. You have served your values faithfully and that's important. That's always important. I'm also pretty thrilled to be bringing on two 34-year-old trustees.
Yeah.
I think that the perspective of younger generations is always important. I'm advertising for a youth mentor, somebody under 30 who can mentor me. So if you want to nominate somebody, please. Tonight's meeting was challenging in so many ways. And let's just not beat around the bush about that. So, you know, I, I think though that as a district, challenge always has to be our teacher. We always have to look and say, okay, what was the part that I could play differently? And whatever happened tonight to try to get to a better outcome. And I think we have an opportunity with a new board to kind of all reset and be our best selves. And I pledge to try to do that for myself. And I'll see what I can learn out of every situation to try to help make things work better. It's all I can do. So I'm excited about this challenge ahead of us. And then the last thing I want to say is this, is you know, as a teacher, I probably had the worst quarter ever in terms of student success and retention. And it was just a disaster, you know, and I worked really hard at it. But it was the worst quarter ever. And it's like, all right, you know what? When I talk to my students, they tell me why they're failing and it's just really hard. And I think that's the reality. So all of which is to say this, maybe we could try to be a little more forgiving with each other and ourselves for the challenge and then just result to better. So I'll see you all next week, way too damn soon. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Handy.
A couple of things. One of the first things I'd like to say is that we really need to consider getting a late start for athletics. I am still floored by this. I had no idea what the students were talking about. And that should never happen. I've been here since 5:00 PM and did not know. It was embedded in a message to the public, no special letter to the trustees. Students are the only reason why we are here. You wonder why I get so angry? I have a granddaughter in there. I have a new baby. I'd rather be doing all of those things, but my commitment is to students. And when I get on this meeting and I find that we are not doing our best, I am really angry. I am really angry, because there before the grace of God go I. I went to Laney College, I went to San Francisco State. I have the same challenges that kids that are still living here and around in my hood have, and I know that this is their ticket to survival or not surviving and incarceration. On this particular issue, I am floored, because the coaches didn't weigh in on this, they're livid. I don't know if the Bay 10 are all shutting down their athletics. And if they're not, then we're even in more trouble. We were what, 13? Laney was down, what, 13% or something? We were down 6,000 students before COVID. We had challenges in our two colleges after COVID, even more extreme challenges. All colleges have it. But if we're shutting down our athletics and the other colleges are not, the other Bay 10 are not doing the same thing, guess what? It is so easy now, a student can be sitting in Texas. In fact, I know a student who's sitting in Texas, who attends the College of Alameda. Students went back home, their colleges are somewhere else. We may not ever get those students back. And if we're cutting out athletics at this point, I've seen apartments in my neighborhood here in the Laurel, where we have five or six athletes who come from different areas, who are living in that same apartment. If they're not here and they're not getting the mentoring of their coach, and they're just isolated, they're going to go and they're not coming back. I, more than anything else, want them to be safe. And I know that their coaches and all of them want them to be safe more than anything else. But when the decision was made, it was not made by the governing board. It was made by a leadership committee without the consultation of the coaches. And, and what they have done, and it's, it's, it's a total, for me, I can see why they feel like they've been slapped in the face, because they're doing everything that they can to keep these students, that they're with day to day. We can say students are important, but how many students do you see in the course of a day? They are there with them, doing everything that they can to ensure their safety. And this decision was made without consulting them, without letting us know. There's, it's not data-based. The whole state of California is purple, but is the state of California doing this? If this is the case, yes, but if that's not the case, we're going to lose our students, they're going to go somewhere else. I thought that we should not have cut the coach up. I have sat here, where some of my trusted colleagues will talk for an hour, if you total, or an hour and a half, if you total up the amount of time that they've spoken during a meeting. And then there have been staged actions, where we'll have 125 speakers from the public come and speak. Our last meetings have been to midnight. This was the first time. It was students that came in that wanted to talk. And we limited them to a minute. For, for four years, I have been saying, our policy is 20 minutes public comment, so let's cut it back so we could get this done. The first real reinforcement of that was tonight, when it was students. I don't see how the students feel like we're putting them first. If other colleges are not having to shut down, then I implore you to figure out how we can make this safe. But our students are living in their cars. They are showering in the gym. They come there, that's the only place that they have to go. So we are really putting them in peril. When they're saying their lives are in danger, if they are in the streets or somewhere else and not in school, they're not joking. This is real. So I hope that starting tomorrow, we will be at our best, trying to figure out how we're going to make this work for our students, that we give them more than an embedded line in a report about COVID. So that they know exactly what the possibilities are. Students cannot survive on maybe when. They have to know date specific, and that needs to be based on, you know, I'm thinking this is coming from Gavin Newsom. This is coming from the state. It's based on data, it's based on what Alameda County has decided, but that is not what we did. So folks, we got to do better. We gave money, COVID funds, we allocated that to stipends for the faculty. COVID funds that were to help our students with housing, food, insecurities, whatever they needed to do, laptops and things. We're not doing them a justice by cutting them off. You know, we can say we're doing great, but we're not, folks. We got to do better. So it is my hope, because ultimately, those students came here to talk to the board of the trustees, because they thought we did it. I'm saying this because we did not, and we support them, I'm sure. Hopefully, all of you support them. But we got to figure this out, folks, and we got to figure it out quickly. And there has got to be communication to the trustees, because when everything goes down, it is not the president's or anyone else's picture that goes in the front of the newspaper, it is ours. So if I'm going to be responsible, I certainly want to be at the table and not on the menu. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee Reese.
Sorry, that took a second to actually unmute. Let me just start off with a wonderful welcome to the new trustees. Again, I am very, very excited to work with the two of you, because it's going to, we have a lot of work to do, and, and it's going to be just wonderful, having fresh voices, fresh ideas. And as trustee Gonzalez Yuen had said, we look forward to learning from you, both in terms of your perspectives and feedback. And for our outgoing trustees, both Meredith and Karen, for both of you, we all know that every district, every environment is shaped by every individual who becomes a part of it. And it is incredibly true that both of you, your work, your spirit, and your legacy will, will most certainly be the, it has been the past, it is the present, and will be the future of this particular district. For Meredith, if, if that kind of impact and effect on the district weren't enough, your impact on the statewide level in terms of, especially on DEI, will remain part of the community college system and the direction of the colleges going forward. So thank you for that. And Karen, just an incredibly warm, reverent hug from afar for all that you are and all that you do. Your staunch advocacy for so many different things. I can think about the security issues, I can think about the Blue Phones, I can think about the Clary Act, I can think about sports. I can think about transparency on bond monies, parcel monies, and the way that you staunchly pursued financial integrity and accuracy in numbers and the answers to questions that we had when it came to the budget. And, and probably the most important thing, Karen, your attention to students. Your incredible fervent advocacy for DACA students is undeniable. Your fundraising, your importance, the importance you place on the Community Resource Center, just, that is undeniable. And we've heard from students who have attested to that too as well. I would say, in addition, the one thing that I can recall about you is that anytime students came to the dais or they came to the public forum and they had issues, you followed up. You got their name, you got their email, and you followed up. And relationships with students were so incredibly important to you, not just one or two, but individuals. You heard them, and you made sure that they knew you heard them, and that you, you really pushed their agenda forward, whatever it was. And it seems like maybe the past four years, you feel like, wow, you haven't done enough, you haven't done enough. And we will never do enough. But as I said with both you and Meredith, the work that you both have done, your spirit, your, your, your tears and laughs, all of that, that has forever shaped the students, forever shaped the faculty, the presidents, the district, the administrators, and most certainly, especially as it relates to you, Karen, you have also influenced and shaped me. So what an honor to have worked with both of you. And again, given our relationship, Karen, what an honor to have worked with you. And so I just bid you farewell and to both of you, and it was just, it was wonderful serving with you. But I know that the work continues, and even though you are not on the dais anymore, it will continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reese.
Thank you.
And so I will bring trustee comments to a close by one, again, welcoming trustees Jenkins and trustee Polk, and looking forward to working with you. And of course, looking forward to continuing to work with you, trustee Weinstein and trustee Brown, as you figure out what your next projects are in this community, because we are not done. I know this. So this is just, see you on the next project, see you on the next, on the, on the next hotbed issue that we're going to be working with together.
Thank you.
And with that, I will move into announcements. Madam Vice President.
Yes, we have a few announcements. We have four. As we've already talked about, there is an updated board meeting scheduled this month. The added board meeting is on Monday, December 14th, and that will include the annual organizational meeting to elect new board officers, and will be the first official meeting for new incoming board members. And there are also two special meetings of the board, which are board retreat sessions confirmed for December 15th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM and December 16th from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. The second announcement is that there are upcoming holiday dates this month, where the district is closed on Thursday, December 24, 2020, to Friday, January 1, 2021. It's the winter holiday closure. Third, the first board meeting of the new year will be on January 5, 2021. And then lastly, this was a, an last edition, save the date for the Peralta Colleges Holiday Soiree on Monday, December 21st from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, brought to you by the Peralta Colleges Foundation and Peralta Community College District. And I'm sure we all know this, but just so that we're clear, that will be virtual. And that's it, Madam President. That is all I have for you tonight.
Thank you so much. That concludes our meeting. I bid you all farewell and see you all on Monday. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.